Non-public would make it officially started, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Are you here to present?
Well, I'm here to like just tell you that I don't have anything to present. Yeah, I'm here for the conference. It's based on the commission.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
Coming to second. Okay, approval of minutes is September 9th. Any questions on them?
Yeah.
Okay, approved by consensus. Community input?
Would that be now?
That'd be, I think that would be you. You're not on our agenda, so yes, come on up.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
I don't think she'd appreciate you coming up.
May she just want to get a notebook? That's my disheveled. So, the reason I'm here this evening is that we have a very dynamic conservation commission right now, which includes a couple of members who have had a decent amount of involvement with Southeastland Trust, which is the, you know, conservation group that's holding easements all over New Hampshire, a couple of hours in fact. And one of the goals that we've sort of set for ourselves is to have a conversation with the select board about working into the budget, some kind of anticipatory funding for pieces of property that come up, that we might want to have an opportunity to protect. We have a fund currently, which is called...
Something like the Land Trust Capital Reserve Funds.
And it has 146 change in it.
Dollars, right? Not thousands of dollars.
146,000 dollars.
146,000.
And we're, and who, the owner of that money?
The trustees of the trust funds manage it. But the town owns it.
Oh, okay, yeah. And the way this has all come about is basically, you know, we've spent the last like five or six months talking about prioritizing certain parcels and, you know, everybody pretty much knows the ones that they are, the one on Bear Road, the Dodge Farm, and potentially Todd Adelman's 90 acres or so on Route 4 and Roberts. So, the piece on Bear Road is for sale. It's been in play a couple of times and come pretty close to selling to a developer. I've been privy once or twice to some of what the plans were, all of which will change the feel of that road forever. And what we've all come to the conclusion about with that road and the town is that everybody thinks of that field as Rollinsford and everybody thinks of that field as ours. So, Linda McGivern, who's the conservation commission member and on the board of SALT, has done some research into a couple of other communities, one of which is Kingston, New Hampshire. They actually have a Friends Group, similar to like a library Friends Group, for conservation. But their town also puts a healthy amount of money into an account every year, so that when a property would come for sale, you'd engage a conservation group like the Nature Conservancy would come in and help with everything, including failing. But usually those organizations are not going to be participatory with us if we don't have a little skin in the game and we show that if we care and it matters to us, which could include that we have a certain amount of money going every year into a fund toward that.
Which is $10,000 currently.
Which is not enough. So, because you're in budget season and, you know, I tried to come last week and we talked about it all summer, I wanted to catch you before you get to the end of it. Linda had a medical issue, so she couldn't make it tonight. But we wanted to, as a board, and I'm speaking on behalf of the chair of the Trust of the Conservation Commission, wanted to put the idea forth to you that we potentially work on upping that amount and starting to educate the community about what it means and what it could potentially be used for going forward, which I think is going to be the easiest thing that we've ever had to educate anyone about, because I think everybody would rather have that field be a field and not stock deal circle. So, that would be the conversation we'd have around the why of putting more money into the account. Now, the Conservation Commission doesn't have any control over that. I mean, we can certainly be advocates for it and we can, you know, have programs and try to teach people about it and look to these other towns to give us resources. And we have a speaker coming from the group in Kingston to educate us more about this Friends Group. But he said that even with the Friends Group, it's really the town's commitment to putting money into the project that gets organizations like Nature Conservancy interested in participating. So, I wanted to put it in front of you before you got much further on your budget. And I'm happy to, you know, any questions about what the Conservation Commission has discussed about it or anything maybe else that you might want to know about it or any questions you may have?
Are those, those groups usually look for like dollar-for-dollar matching?
It really depends on the project and it depends on the inventory conservation value of a piece, right? So, some piece might have sentimental value but very little conservation value. Some piece might have a lot of conservation value and nobody even knows it's there, right? It's out in the middle of nowhere and nobody, if you're real, I mean, you know, the Dodge Farm is kind of funny like that. It's 250 acres, but you can only see little slips of it from the main roads. And it's this huge, you look on a map, it's this huge chunk in the middle of, you know, probably most people in town, newer people in town have never heard of the Dodge Farm. But everybody knows the field on Bear Road.
Right.
And as of our last meeting, which was about a week and a half ago, there, the owner and a buyer are in pretty serious conversation. So, and we may take that hit. And maybe that happens and then that super motivates people to say, we don't want this to happen again.
Right.
It might be too late because we haven't been proactive in our efforts.
We don't have a million bucks to put up.
Well, we don't, and we don't put, we don't make a good conscious effort every year to show that we're serious about doing it by putting a little money aside every year either. Because $10,000 is nothing, really.
It's nothing to hurt.
Yeah.
And so, this land is all in Rollinsford?
Any piece of conservation land that our Conservation Commission would be advocating to work with a larger conservancy group would be obviously in Rollinsford. We'd have no reason...
What do you mean on the Bear Room? It's all in Rollinsford?
Bear Road is a Rollinsford piece, yeah.
All of it?
Yes. Yeah.
It's 55 acres from Fresh Creek to about the middle of the field. And it goes into the woods. Yep.
Okay. It's riverfront.
Well, it's a salt marsh. It's an estuary in the back, like the salt, the tidal water comes all the way up into the back of Old Mill Road. So, and people don't realize that. And that's why if it gets built, the houses will sit up front in the field, because all of that water is going on, all that, you know, more preservable, valuable land for nature would be in the back. So, everybody goes, oh, the house will be in the wood, you won't even see them. Like, you don't think, well, because right behind the woods is up the wetland. The estuary is there.
Has anybody approached us about the possibility of building out there? These developments?
No, no, but that would not be indicative of any potential plans necessarily, because our zoning ordinance is online and typically the people, the developers are familiar with our regulations. They work with professionals who have represented other projects in town and are therefore familiar with our regs. And that's really all they need to know to know what the potential is in Rollinsford in any given area for development.
And the job that we have to do as a Conservation Commission is to, you know, connect with people in the town to understand that choice, right? Like, do we want this or not? And I've been doing conservation stuff in town since 2004. And I remember in the early 2000s, it might have been '05 or '06, Strafford Regional Planning did a free workshop for the town at the grade school and about 40 people came and it was planning for 2020. Weirdly, which is just three short months away, which at the time in 2005 felt like, well, that will never happen, 2020, right? But what was so interesting is they kind of put the whole, the whole room through an exercise of, you know, here are these maps and here's the different kind of resources and kinds of things that are in these different areas of town. Where would you put development? Where would you put land conservancy? Where would you do this? Where would you do that? And people really struggled with giving up any of the land for, it was really interesting when the conversation was really put to people. And then we had an interesting conversation about the land that we do have that zone for commercial. What kind of commercial would we want there? And so, this whole report was made from that and it, you know, it ended up being like a great exercise and it was really kind of interesting at the time, created a little fluff. Not long after that, we got Scott Land into an easement. That was kind of an outcome of it. But then it all kind of died down and we haven't had a lot of work on master plan. We haven't really, you know, done a lot of those things with our zoning and our planning since that time to put some parameters around this and find out where people's, you know, interests lie in the town, what kind of, what kind of town do we want to be? At the time, it was, we want to preserve our rural character. That's who we are. And if you think about the last 15 years, how much rural character has been destroyed around us? I mean Dover's gone, you know, gone. Portsmouth has exploded, you know? It's changed tremendously even in 15 years. And here we are, like still sitting here with this, it's almost like a magical bubble is over us, but it's all still here. And maybe the majority of the town will want to develop at all and maybe they won't. But I think we could use this as an opportunity to start really in earnest, having that conversation and have a couple of pretty serious things on the table right out of the gate that we could, we could make decisions about, rather than just letting it happen to us. Be proactive about it, be in a planning mindset about how we want to control what happens instead of just letting it happen. So, that's what we've been talking about over the summer and we will have a speaker come in. We were gonna, we were gonna invite Peter Micho to our November meeting, who grew up here and knows the history, to give us a little bit more background on those couple of pieces from that historical perspective, so we could put together more information that almost inventoried that, about those properties, kind of collect that, those stories so people could know it a little better. But the guy from Kingston has also been invited to come and talk to us about that Friends Group as well. So, but the, the question for you or the, or the, what I'm putting forth as a consideration from the Conservation Commission, as an advisory board to you or, you know, to be able to give an opinion to you from the board, is we would really like you to consider for the budget, putting a larger number on that and drawing some more attention to that account and what it's for and what we might possibly be able to do with it when you're putting the budget together overall to go in front of the Budget Committee. Because it would definitely be on your budget. We don't have a, we don't have a budget. I mean, we have our budget, but we don't have a...
Yeah. It ends up on a warrant article, right?
It is a warrant article. So, with the, I imagine there are a number of factors in determining what would be a good amount of money to put on that warrant article, some being the amount of available land that you're trying to conserve. But all, you know, and, you know, the deliberative session could change the amount too. So, it's, it's a conversation starter that could change there. But what is your experience about how much, or what do you know about how much money annually gets the attention of conservation groups?
Well, different, I don't think it's, I don't, I think it's, it's a good faith effort annually. I think it's the amount of money that you have to put toward a project. So, if McHugh's, if McHugh's property is a million dollars and we have a third of that, we could go to the Nature Conservancy and say, we have a third of the money. How can you match us? We want to work with you. You know, we'll do private fund, you know, you have, you just have to be able to go and play in the game, right? You can't just show up and go, oh, we, you know, we have $25,000. Like, you can't be that, I don't think, to have them take you seriously. Some towns do it all themselves and buy it outright. They put aside enough money to buy things outright and then choose which conservancy group, you know, like a SALT group that would support them. But, you know, there's Farmington and Barrington have put huge, Barrington put 3,000 acres of land in the conservancy and the town raised half the money and the Nature Conservancy paid the other half. So, you know, it just depends on the situation, I think. The number that the Conservation Commission threw around, based on things that Linda had researched in other towns, was a good faith, you know, number for this year would be, let's up it to $25,000 and then we can have a conversation about what might be a good annual amount that we could settle on that we would want to put in on a regular basis. So, that was their starting point. But I'm, I'm going to tell you, you know, I'm, I'm ignorant about that, other than I, it makes perfect sense to me how it works. I think it's so case by case and each individual situation that I can't say there's like a standard set amount.
Sure.
Yeah.
Any questions? Any other community input? Okay, police?
Good evening. Okay, three purchase orders. The first one is for Tia Pass. Ever since, the police department has had a webpage and email long before the town did, Tia Pass has always picked up that cost herself. And this year, I asked her to submit a reimbursement to us, because I don't, I don't think she should be. She's doing that on her own anymore. So, I have purchase order number 1693 made out to Tia Pass for reimbursement for all of our email address fees and our domain name through the GoDaddy website. And that's a total of $403.73. Now, I don't know if we want to take that out of the technology line item or I do have money in the office, office expense line item, I can take it, take that out of, so...
I think it would be good, since it's going to be an annual expense, to put it in IT, in budget, for it in IT.
I'll move purchase order 1693 to Tia Pass in the amount of $4373 for reimbursement of email address and domain name.
Okay, any discussion?
So, this brings her current for 2019? Or is this all 19?
19 and 20.
Is there two year, every other registration?
But she already paid it.
She's already paid it, yes.
Okay. But we won't see this expense in 20, is what you're saying?
Correct.
Okay. All right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, purchase order number 1704 made out to Taylor Rental for diagnose, a short in the wiring for a utility trailer, hookup and cruiser 72 and to replace all of the converter wiring. And that's $258. We developed a short somewhere along the way and it messed up the, not only the lighting on the, on the utility trailer, but the cruiser itself. And that's, that's our newest one, the one that we got last year. So, they were able to take it in right away and fix it for us within the day, so...
Purchase order 1704 to Taylor Rental for diagnosing a short in the wiring in the utility trailer, $258.
One second, that.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
And lastly, we have our annual TASER recertification coming up in December, so we need to order some training cartridges and a battery for one unit. So, purchase order number 1705 to Axon, A-X-O-N, for a battery and training cartridges for $748 and that will come out of our equipment line item.
Move purchase order 1705 to Axon for $748 for TASER training and equipment.
All right, any discussion?
Nope.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Our animal control officer has expressed a desire to work as a part-time police officer. We currently have one vacant part-time position open at this point. I anticipate that by the end of the year, we may have an additional one or two vacant positions. By allowing her to, to do this, we'll get a female on department. And, you know, she already has some, some knowledge of the town and she's been working with the community now for three years, so I think she'll be a welcome addition. So, I'd like to have her do a scheduled meeting to come in to meet with you folks and, you know, give her the opportunity to, you know, give you her story and certainly if you have any questions about, about her at that point. The academy would, would start in January. And for the part-time, it's two nights a week where they go to Concord for a couple hours.
Will she maintain her dog? Will she maintain her dog's position as well?
Yeah, she'll maintain, she'll maintain animal control officer's position as well.
Okay. Yep, why don't you just kind of give us a couple of dates and we can leave a little...
Yeah, perfect. And lastly, ordinances. Passing. One, two, one, two. Recently, the Highway Safety Committee met and we talked about, first of all, the speed limit on Bear Road, which is becoming a bone of contention lately, more so than in the past. So, we have two copies of the ordinance in front of you. We have the original words as it's, as it's written currently and highlighted red will be the changes. The second copy behind that, attached to that, will be the final draft. So, for the speed ones, we're looking to remove Bear Road from the 35 zone and add that to the 30 zone along the Howe Road, Mechanic Street, Old Indigo Hill Road, Peas Lane, Ross Road, Settlement Circles, Bruce Street, Stevens Court, Toll Road and Warner Street. All of the other streets in town that are not listed in the ordinance are now listed in the ordinance, the 30 zone. And then the section three, we're repealing the 35 zone specifically for Bear Road. That's our recommendation to the select board to bring for a public hearing. And the second one is the travel restrictions. Currently, the travel restrictions for commercial vehicles are limited to Bear Road, Sligo Road and Penn Hill. This ordinance will actually prevent all large commercial vehicles from traveling on any roadway in town, any town maintained, or excuse me, unless they are delivering services to that particular road or they're going to and from their place of business through town with their most direct route. For example, Mick Construction could not use Farnley Street to get to Main. They would have to use the most direct route, which would be Main Street to Silver Street and out. C&amp;J Bus will not be allowed to use Farnley Street to get to Dover or to SALT or, they would use the roads that they currently use, Roberts Road or Main Street. So, we're actually not prohibiting anybody that's in town from any of, any of the routes that they normally take. We're just prohibiting all the folks that come through town and using like Bear Road or Clinton Road or some of the other roads as cut-throughs.
Or the GPS sends them that way because it's the quicker route?
Correct.
Not the best, better route for that vehicle?
Yeah, right. GPS usually sends you the most quickest route as opposed to the correct route.
Yeah.
You know, we have that trouble on Oak Street quite often. The truckers will put in a, in some destination and they find that they're going down Oak Street and, you know, we're stopping them for, for weight limit violations going over the bridge and they're all saying, well, you know, my GPS unit told me to go this way. Even though there is an established truck group going through Rollins, you know, Portland Avenue, Oak Street, down Portland Avenue and all the way through downtown Dover, then out to Rollins Road.
The bridges are posted, right?
It is posted, yes.
Not until you get there, right? Stop.
Well, if you're, if you're, if you're coming from the Rollinsford direction, Portland Avenue or Rollins Road is posted, lets you know the bridge is posted. However, if you're coming from Oak Street in Dover on either end, or Portland Avenue from Dover or Broadway from Dover, it's not posted. And I repeatedly have sent letters to the DOT asking them to do that. And I don't know if we get to the point where they're, we're not going to enforce that weight limit on that bridge and while it's adequate posted. Because we have had some truckers say, well, I didn't realize that it was posted until I got to the bridge. I've got a line of cars behind me. What am I going to do at that point? I can't back up because they backed up to the traffic light on Oak Street and Rollins Road. So, quite often, well, I shouldn't say quite often, but at least a couple of times a year, we'll get a call from a trucker saying, hey, can you come out and do traffic for me because I need to back up because I made it to the bridge and didn't realize it was posted until I got there.
Well, less than a month ago, I called the police department or the, yeah, the police department, because it was a tractor-trailer on the other end and cars were passing and, you know, and it was like, it was dangerous, you know? And it's like, why did he go? But then I went and I didn't see any signs on the Route 4. It was on the Route 4 side. But it's like, yeah, I mean, it can be dangerous because how the heck is he going to get out if you don't have help, you know?
So, so as far as travel warrants is concerned, you know, that would, that would have an expense to it. We'd have to buy some signs. We would put, put them on the main approaches of town like Dover does, like so Portland Avenue, Rollins Road on both ends, Front Street, so all of your, your main Summersworth Road and Rollins Road. So, all of your main approaches will have these signs so they can't say, well, I didn't know.
Okay, so our action then is to make a public hearing date, right? And get this to come through. And does Highway Safety Group comment?
There'll be at least one representative, but hopefully several members will be here in fact, in the press.
So, that's our action then for this, is to make sure that we get a public hearing set up. Okay, all right. Is there a particular day that is better? Is there a particular day that's better?
Well, I can't imagine it would take that long. So, I don't know if you want to do it prior to our scheduled meeting.
Yeah, okay, that's a good idea, like a half an hour plan.
You don't want it that long.
Yeah?
Then what's going to show up?
Nobody's going to show up?
I mean, they'll allow like 15 minutes.
You could do a 6:15.
Yeah, yeah, we can. All right, we'll get that in front of you.
Okay, true. That's all the rest of the board, anything for me? Thank you.
Thank you, good night. How much time do we need?
I don't need much.
Because we have a presentation on the budget that could be long. Let's see if we can do it, you know, quick before. How about you two guys?
I didn't take mine.
Oh, no, go.
Just wait for them to bring you some.
Just want to make sure, because they're on the, they're on the time for seven, if you can ask, if they can just wait for fire to go through, it shouldn't take that long.
Yeah, absolutely. We're going to let some of the current chairs go first, like with fire or highway.
All right. All right, Mark, why don't you come on up?
Couple of housekeeping things to take care. Purchase orders, first one I have here is for, I explained this to you before about trying to make same equipment on the same engine, so when we go to calls on that layer, we're going to have to swap equipment. I finally got the invoice and whatnot from the last thing we ordered. I had explained it as for water supply equipment, which is valve strain, we put on the bottom of a hose to draw the water into the fire truck. We ordered that and it's from the purchase order 753. It's going to go to Fire Safety USA and it's for $451.
That's what I need. Perfect, thank you.
Move purchase order 1753 to Fire Safety USA Inc. for water supply equipment, the amount of $451.
Oh, a second, sorry.
All right, any discussion, questions? All right.
1753.
1753, yep. All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
This one's hot off the presses. I just gave it, George just gave it to me now. The CPR research class that we did at the station, I don't know, a month or so ago, George, anyway.
Yeah, please, Dan.
Yeah, CPR stuff for the town employees and whatnot. I just got the invoice for that from, it's for Clifford Holman, who was our instructor that time, used a little bit of money that we have in our training budget. It's purchase order 1659, it was $130 for that bear class.
Do you even need a purchase order for that?
Oh, I didn't because it's under the 130. All right, well, I filled it out anyway.
Yeah, but you can even under the other side.
I'm sorry, how much is it?
I'm thirty.
Yeah, I didn't really need one.
I'll, I'll take the invoice and you can, actually, I'll take the whole thing.
Take the whole thing.
You have to get the invoice here and we'll sign it.
That's there.
And to approve it.
You actually don't because it's just a hundred and thirty dollars.
We don't approve every invoice?
No, not under, so, so the approval is in the purchase order if it's.
But he's, we didn't approve the purchase order because it's under the hundred and thirty dollars.
Right, department heads can spend money at will within their budget under, at like, under two hundred dollars at a time.
And it doesn't have to be signed by us, the invoice?
No.
Okay.
You can review that when we look at the.
I will, thank you.
And that's where we were starting when I was here before and said we should change that to five hundred or a thousand.
No.
Remember that? Remember that discussion we hit before over broken down fire trucks and whatnot? That's where all that came from. Okay, one last one. This one is for, been a long time coming and something that we want to do is gonna help us with our dispatching and individuals responding for calls. This was on the back burner for a while and I had explained it when Dover was going through all their upgrades and we were doing all our road radio upgrades and whatnot. Now the Dover's up and running. They have a spot in their CAD which is computerated dispatching over there, a spot for us. What we want to do is we want to add a paging services for us. We use our little individual pagers. We can have a very limited distance to which anybody's gonna hear. Since we only have five of us that live in town, we're fine, we hear it. But we have people that are a little further outside that circle. The pager doesn't always work. There's always a little bit of a dead spot. So the system that we have now at the station is off of our computer through a monitor and then we dispatch it ourselves out through the station. But it's not foolproof because if we have lightning strikes and power bumps and issues like that, it'll shut that system down. So there's been times when we've gone to calls and if the local guys didn't hear it, we don't get all the rest of the members. They don't have any notification. So what we want to add is the I am responding system. You're very familiar with that, Denise? To our system and what's gonna happen is that would be dispatched, that would be notified through Dover. When a call came to Dover to get the fire department on the air, they just gonna push a button and it's gonna go through everybody's cell phones, their iPhones and whatnot. And there's no way they should ever miss anything. So if we have a failure in town of our local system, this right here one hundred percent backs up all that, at least now. And the other benefit to this is when there's a call right now, I'll show up at the station, I don't know who's coming. I have no idea who heard it or who's gonna respond. With this type of system, they're gonna put a TV screen up in the radio dispatch room and everybody on their phone is gonna have the ability, if they're gonna make the call, they can type in what they're gonna do. So they may still be ten or fifteen minutes out, but now I know who's coming. So if I can get two or three guys here, we get the first piece of equipment on the road, okay, I know I got another engine company right behind me. It's gonna take their travel time to get to the station. We're gonna have the ability to send out heat messages that we have struggled with now over this system. Four or five of the towns around us use this system, so we can integrate with them. And actually, what happened is South Burke uses it, Elliott uses it, North Burke uses it, Newington uses it. And we talked to the representative, notice it's a fourteen hundred dollar system and we kind of slid under the rug and I can get the same system as a group discount for eight sixty. So we did a little bit of marketing and maneuvering and whatnot. So if we, if this gets approved tonight and everybody's okay with it, I can have this up and running in the fire station by the end of the week. And that's gonna greatly improve our knowing who's coming and what our length of time is to get stuff out. So it's a purchase order sixteen fifty-two. It's called I am responding as a paging service is the name of it. It's actually to an emergency service company that comes out of Dilwell, New York is where their home base is. I had a telephone conversation with these folks the other day. I'm somewhat familiar with it, probably not as much as you are because I know Harry uses it. David's very familiar with it. This is a major upgrade for us as far as getting our people on the road and knowing that we're gonna have enough people when it comes to go on calls.
The, the good thing is that they know, you know, that they have a driver coming or they have an officer coming.
Because I can label that. I can say this guy's a driver, this guy's an E and T, this guy can drive the tank truck. So if I'm not always there, some of the other officers can look and say, okay, I got this guy, I got company there, I got this, I got this. So we can start piecing things together rather than, alright, who's coming through the door?
Right.
Or standing there hoping somebody comes through the door.
You know, saying you're ETA of two minutes or half an hour or whatever, you can base your, who are you gonna wait for by that, that technology you didn't have before?
Don't have.
It is a good.
It's gonna give me a few less gray hairs as quick as I get them, since I know it was coming on a timely basis.
I move purchase order one six five two to Emergency Services Marketing Corp. Incorporated for I am responding paging services and then a eight sixty.
A second.
And where's that coming out tomorrow?
That is gonna come out of, it's basically radio equipment under our paging. So that new line item that we used last year to get all our stuff up and running, we're gonna slide in right under that, that line item. And you just gave me my newest thing here. And that was a fifteen thousand dollar line item to fill in. That was the one we're gonna use year to year to add more portables till we get to our number. It's gonna slide in under there. So there's plenty of funds for that. And right now, that's eight sixty. That's even gonna go lower because it's gonna be a subscription thing. We can get it at a three or a five-year increment once we get it up and running. There's also a fifty dollar setup fee, so that'll go away. But if we decide, once we get it up, we want to go to a three or five-year commitment, we can make it less than that. So there's, there's other options.
So this is a year?
It's just for the first year. We're gonna get it in, get it going, work the bugs out. And then I know as we go along, when we come back for this next year, it's gonna be a lot less than that.
So this is gonna be October to October?
Uh, probably, yeah.
So you'll need to, if you want, you'll have to adjust your budget to reflect for twenty twenty?
Yeah, it'll fit right in where I get a spot, but I understand what you're saying.
Alright, any questions?
No.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Because the other thing that that's gonna allow us to do with this system is I talked before about little iPads that every fire department now is starting to use. They have a system that'll integrate that into it also, so we can have something just as big as your computer, a little tablet in front of us. We can plug in buildings, we can put building plans in it, we can put fire detection systems in it, we can put fire hydrants in it. So if we're out shoveling hydrants with five feet of snow that he can't dig out or we find perch course to help us with, we can put all that stuff right in there and that, that information is just putting, pushing buttons instead of filing through paperwork. So there's a lot of good for that. We're gonna get paid for our buck. That's all I have from the board. Anybody, do you have anything for me?
No.
No.
Okay. The only thing I need from you, we're gonna get it Thursdays, I need some more purchase orders. I just wanted to, I stole the last one. So I'll see you Thursday.
Alright.
Okay? Thank you.
Thanks, Mark.
Try not to, some things will happen.
Alright, guys.
Thank you.
Would you like it on? God, it is looking warm.
Do we really have it non-public?
Um, yes, George, revisiting George's non-public as last week briefly at some point if he wants to just.
Can we defer it to next week?
Meeting.
Yeah, we have a budget.
Um, we'd have to notice a non-public because that's separate from budget workshop.
It's just, it's just on the truck, for sure.
It's what?
Setting up rules for the truck if it was.
This non-public?
Well, as.
We were originally.
I understand, but I haven't gone through my spreadsheets yet a hundred percent, so I'm not prepared to make any decisions.
So we'll defer it to the next one.
Okay, have you gone through them? That Chuck sent us?
Oh, I haven't, no.
Okay, so in, we need to know, we just have this. Alright, so we're gonna defer this to next week.
I forgot they were there.
Uh huh, alright. Um, highway visit for October seventh?
Black thirty.
Thirty. Can you get that just? That's your meeting, all of the double employees and the particular response.
We need to discuss how we're transitioning to a full board meeting there after you meet with them or skipping a regular business meeting or reconvene back here at a specific time?
I would say that we would convene back here, but I don't know how long it takes, so.
Yeah.
Is there space for us to do it there?
Of course, plenty of room, good table. Chairs, we don't have.
We don't have to, you know, necessarily.
We have another week to talk before we.
Yeah, we don't have to straighten it out.
We'll figure it out, yeah, alright. Transfer station ordinance revisions, is that you?
Yeah. I have gone through the ordinance. I haven't found anything, I guess part of it depends on where we're headed. And I found a few things in here that probably could be cleaned up some. But to give you an update on where we might be headed or where I'd like to think we might be headed, I had talked about scales quite some time ago. And we've been, George and I have been talking and I've been talking to the guys at the transfer station on how it may work and talking to Caroline about it. This driver is using scales. My primary thought on the scales when I saw them in May at the NIRA conference was to be able to weigh our cardboard bales, weigh our plastic bales. Those are the two products that we ship out. The aluminum bales, we take over to grow it and we're right with them when they get weighed. So it's, you know, but I'd probably weigh them anyway to know. I just don't like the idea of shipping stuff out and being at somebody else's whim as to what they weigh. You know, are they, I assume they're giving us the right weights, but if I can say I've sent you thirty bales, they were a thousand thirty-five pounds apiece, we'd know. So when I talked to the gentleman about the scales in May, they were a lot cheaper than I thought they were. And then from that point, we've been discussing amongst ourselves the possibility of charging by weight for demo. I don't know, I'm still a bit twisted in between on that. The more we talk about it, the more, I won't say cons we come up with, but it's labor intensive is probably the biggest one. I don't know, the way our ordinance is written, it says small pickup truck, six foot bed is, I think, thirty-five dollars. I don't know what the weight is. It's, I mean, you can fit a lot of weight in that or you can put in, are you hauling feathers or lead, basically? So what we'd have to do, my, I guess my plea is I'd like to get the scales if we could. And with that, take a few months to see what some of this stuff weighs. You get someone that comes in with a pickup truck load, have him loaded onto the scales. Still have him deposited based on our ordinance as written today, but it would give us an idea where we are weight-wise. We'd have to be in the ten cent range to cover our costs of the dumpster and the hauling, the disposal and the hauling fees. And that would also give us a little buffer on manpower to be able to do it because there's gonna be a little more manpower involved. So ten cents a pound to get rid of that. Is that twenty dollars, what did I figure, twenty dollars for?
Two hundred pounds?
Yeah. Yeah, so, I mean, but I don't know with, with a pickup truck. You know, is it two hundred pounds, is it four hundred pounds? So.
It's a bulky item and change it too.
Yeah, yeah, so we've got, we've got some other things to work out, but we can't work them out unless we have the scales. I guess it's my, it, it's kind of a.
Yes, my, my position was I thought we're getting the scales to be more accurate on the disposal of demo.
Well, that's where I want to head with it.
So we're making, but if you're saying it's not gonna work for you, if you're not sure I want to invest in scales, if that's not what we're gonna be doing.
Well, I think we can make it work, but I need to know, like I say, I don't know what some of these things weigh and where we need to be.
So the ordinance can change to a price per pound?
It would, yeah, yeah. Yeah, and it's a lot more fair for that.
But it also was, his point is it could be, are we not getting enough or maybe we are getting too much based on the weight?
I think on some items, on some items, I think we're getting paid fine on. If we go weight-wise and you put a, a couch on the scales or an overstuffed chair, for instance.
Yeah.
What does an overstuffed chair weigh? Is it sixty-five, seventy, eighty pounds? Where our ordinance, I think, says it's worth twenty-five dollars to throw it away. You know, if we go by the weight, we might be underch, not undercharging, but for that particular item, we might be paying, we might be receiving less.
I think the point is you won't know how off we are and how frequently we're off if we do, it's a chicken and egg to some degree.
Exactly.
But whereas we're putting money into a piece of equipment that's costing us more, so that's even worse.
But think of it like an evaluation, like so whatever the out-of-pocket is after the grant will allow you to, if nothing else, check your fees. And with the amount of money you're spending on those disposal fees because the, because that you're not bringing in on revenue, if nothing else, you could change mattresses from ten dollars to seventeen fifty or, or something that's more accurate. It doesn't necessarily mean that you have to go to a price per pound, but you can't evaluate that and work on, if you, if you fix the problem of revenue not meeting expenses without scales, then you're continuing to do it arbitrarily based on volume when we're charged by weight. So at least this way, regardless of how the consumer experience it, they can at least pull things out of the demo bin and weigh five different mattresses over the course of two weeks and decide that the average would be something other than what it currently is. But without data, and you can't get data without the scales, you're never gonna be able to evaluate what about our price structure isn't working?
Then what do you do with the scales once you have your price structure fixed? What are you doing with scales? Only, only gonna check on somebody and make sure they're not robbing us?
No, we still, you still get demo coming in, household wood, sheet rock, that sort of stuff coming in. And we'd still use it for charging accordingly on that.
So maybe like a chair would get a, a better set price.
Right.
So then others you might do by the pound versus by a solid number.
Like sheet rock, you don't know what sheet rock might weigh because it's a little bit or a little bit more and you don't have a price per square inch of sheet rock weight or something, you know? So you can completely revamp the pricing structure and get more accurate on some things and still price each, but move to by weight on like the more loose debris, the, the actually true demo debris.
But it's labor intensive.
It's, it's a bit labor intensive. I mean, we've still got a, I've still got a spot in my budget now, which is gonna get chewed up this year for one more person based on us being, well, basically there's more coming in. There's more debris, there's more trash coming in, so it's costing us more. Fortunately, I get a little bit of extra money in there where I didn't hire another person this year to help offset that. We've adjusted that for next year's budget and I still have another person in there for next year, so.
Again, more money to do this project.
Right.
Which theoretically your, your scales will allow you to pick the price point so that you're paying for that. So that if people want to dispose of debris and, and disposing of debris requires the aid of an extra person, then the disposal of that debris pays for that extra person, I think is what they're trying to say. The extra person that they thought they would need anyway, but they just haven't been able to fill yet.
Shingles is another one. We charge by the square, which is a ten by ten area. Someone comes in and says they have two square shingles, we're not gonna lay them out and see if they have a ten by, you know, a twenty by twenty area if they have two, two square. So we take their word for it and I think for the most part, people are honest. But shingles is another heavy commodity. You put that in the, in the demo dumpster and if you picked up a bundle of shingles, that's a third of a square on a bundle. So they're heavy. And those, I think, we could adjust the price and people would be paying more appropriate for things like that. Not that we get a ton of it, but we do, you know, we get a fair amount of it, so. The scales themselves, the, I've got two different prices on them. It's the same set of scales, but in two different ways. You can either get it with or without a printer. If we were considering, if we're considering charging the customer, we should have a printer so we can give them a receipt as to what they're getting rather than watching them see a number on a screen and jotting it down on a piece of paper. They should get something printed up. So if we buy the whole kit and caboodle with a printer, the printer, the scales, the cables, the readout, it's twenty-five seventy-four. Now, New Hampshire the Beautiful has a grant program, but we can get fifty percent of that back. So we're about, at about a little over twelve hundred dollars. If we go with just the scales themselves with the readout and no printer, it's fifteen forty-four. Once again, we can get half that money back. Once again, we can get half that money back, so we're a little bit seven different.
Can you add the printer later?
You can add it later, yeah. The biggest expense on the printer, the printer itself is three hundred and seven dollars. The biggest expend, expense is seven hundred and twenty-five dollars for the tech to come out, install it and certify it. And it has to be certified because of Board of Weights and Measures in New Hampshire.
Is that to be done every year?
Yes, it does. It's about five hundred bucks a year to recertify it. I did talk to the folks at Weights and Measures today because my concern was, do we have to be licensed as a weighmaster? You do not if it's not a drive-on scale. It surprised me, so.
Well, how are you going to get a truck on there if you don't have a drive-on?
You're not, you unload it into a bin, which we have a bin you could unload it into. And then we pick it up with a skid steer and dump it.
Okay.
So it's not, I say it's, it's not hugely labor intensive, but if we get that one extra person that we have in the budget, we'll have a job. Plenty for, plenty for everybody to do. So as much as I'd like to have the whole thing now and get New Hampshire Beautiful to pay for all of it, I don't know whether they would pay for the printer down the road. I guess to be conservative, I'd like to get just the scales for fifteen forty-three. And get half the money back from New Hampshire. Unless you want to get the whole thing, you get half of, get half of twenty-five hundred dollars back versus half of fifteen hundred in round numbers. So. I know it's a lot of money. Skip ahead a little bit for some good news, some little bit better news. Last time I was in front of you, we talked about plastic and how it was going to cost us to get rid of it. The girl at NARA gave me the wrong information. I talked to another girl there, Bonnie, who's been there a long time. It's actually revenue, not expense. So, yeah. So it's four, it's not a lot though, it's four cents a pound, yeah, four cents a pound is what they pay me, would pay us. Eighty dollars a ton. And I've got thirty bales over there right now. I think they weigh about a thousand pounds apiece, once again, but those scales I don't know. But, so there's going to be, there's, there's a revenue stream there that, you know, I was quite concerned it was going to be expensive. It's actually revenue.
So that isn't, it doesn't matter what kind of plastic it is?
No, one through seven, yeah. The question you folks had was, what do they do with everything in the one through seven? The number fives is about the only thing that possibly gets thrown out. Everything else gets recycled to a certain extent. So, because we thought, you know, we were talking ones and twos are definitely something they recycle. Well, they recycle all, the fives are the only questionable thing, so.
So do you have to put fives out?
No, no, we can send it all the way it is. We've been doing this since, what, the second week of January, I think. Still don't have a truckload, so, but we're getting close. I mean, well, we've got thirty bales, I think it's about forty-eight bales for a truckload.
But we usually dump that once a week.
Yeah, we used to dump it once a week at.
Two hundred and seventy dollars.
Yeah, so.
When it wasn't crushed and.
Right.
Yeah.
Right, so, yep. So it's, that's working out okay. I've got five bales of aluminum over there to ship out sometime this week, headed over to Broward. It's been paying roughly twenty cents a pound. So we've gotten anywhere between twenty and thirty-five, it depends on the market, so.
So if you went forward with the scales, how are you going to protect them from the weather? Because they have to be enclosed, right?
A roof, a roof over it.
Just a roof over it?
Which is something very simple.
Because you're not going to drive any truck down through there and you're just going to have a.
Yeah, and it's four foot by four foot, so we're not talking a big massive thing, so.
I think we've moved forward with the scales at this point, and I like the idea of the printer.
I wanted to go with a print teller because I think that we're going to want to have people who's going to want to have a receipt of what, what they're made for.
I mean, we could still give them a receipt, we just give them a handwritten. They're going to be sending, they're going to see the printout, but.
And that's the difference of five.
Uh, it's about a thousand.
Yeah, but when you rebate.
Well, yeah, five hundred back, yeah, yeah, yeah. So.
I just think that if you're going to do it, you can get the present on the printer.
That's true. That's true.
So is that going to be?
You folks have options.
That's going to be undercover as well?
Yeah. Yeah.
I'm wondering what the output on the thing itself is, if they use a printer themselves.
It's a special printer, it's, you mean what type of printer?
So if there's a, there's a module, I assume, that says this is what the weight is, and there must be some sort of output from that unit to their special printer.
Right.
We can just take a Raspberry Pi and put our own printer on it?
I don't know. That I don't know.
But then it's like, well, if we're going to say that our Raspberry Pi is just as good as their printer, then we might as well just write it out and post it out and give it to them instead. There you go.
Yeah, that's the information, I know in that packet somewhere I had, that's the printer. So it's a special printer for the machine itself. I don't think you can hook another printer up to it.
Is the rebate like, it's a short thing?
From what everyone's telling me. Yep. We get, we get twenty percent off the price of the machine to start, of everything to start with from Fairbank Scales. They're the ones that we purchase them from. They give NARA members twenty percent off. And then New Hampshire Beautiful, it's, from what I understand, you put in, they'll give it to you.
The money's there right now.
Yeah. So, I mean, no, of course, no grant is a hundred percent cast in stone, but from, from what everybody's telling me.
Do you have to buy it before you can get the grant or can, do you apply for the grant and then you can buy it?
Well. From what, from what the grant policy says, do you have at least half the purchase price available to spend at this time? So I don't know whether you, I don't know. And I don't know who I could.
Where's the money going to come from?
You have contingency. Minimally, you have contingency. You have the re-budgeting workshop, your worksheet, there's, you know, other places where as we dial down to the end of the year, you can see more clearly where money might come from, might come from. But minimally, you haven't touched contingency yet.
And we are handing, departments are spending more and more.
Within their budget.
I know that, but what we've thought might have been a savings going possibly to the end, it isn't necessarily that. Every department is spending.
I'm not sure that that doesn't mean that there's not still savings.
Well, no, because that's all in their own budget because it's still a contingency, but. Is the, is the year a fiscal year or for the grant? I mean, is it?
That I don't know. I assume it's a fiscal year.
New Hampshire Beautiful, because of their signs, remember it has an October first refresh date on their transfer station sign? So it might be that the grant cycle runs that same year. And that would be helpful to know, like, do they know if they're going, if that's true, do they have, do they know that they have grant money again available October first so that we're in a new year with them?
Are you saying like October first or October first?
Right, what I'm saying is, like, is there money still available later this year, even if that's in a different year for NRA? So that you can wait a few weeks and, if you want, and see better how the rest of the budget's doing and then do it.
I'd like to at least have guaranteed that we're going to get the grant, so we can apply for a grant, right?
I, I, I'm confident that they wouldn't say that it's, you know, very achievable in the way they're saying it if it's not really very achievable. We've gotten grants from them before. There's money for the taking, really. It's just about applying it and committing to purchasing it, so I wouldn't worry about that. And I believe that the last time we did that, we got affirmation that it was available, we were approved before we did the purchase. Because I can't imagine we ever would have done a purchase without knowing that the grant's there.
They did bring it up at the last meeting last week, I went to the, uh, New Hampshire.
NARA.
NARA meeting last week, they, they did say grant money is still available for scales, storage units as of right now, so.
So is it desire of the board on this? So just the fifteen forty-three, that's just, that's just the balance, right? And not the ramp?
It would be.
Balance.
Yep.
The quick disas, quick disconnect and back to calibration, right?
Yep.
And the installation setup?
No.
No.
It's this one. The three twenty-nine and the one sixteen.
Got it.
Yep, closer.
So the printer's actually only three hundred dollars.
The printer itself is three hundred, but the seven and a quarter is the setup and calibration.
Which would have to be done every year.
Yeah, but it's not seven fifty every year, it's about five hundred every year.
Got it, is that on the scale or on the printer?
On the scale, they calibrated to the printer.
But the scale itself would have to be calibrated every year anyway regardless?
Yes.
Yeah, so probably less than five hundred dollars. Because those printers, so it's three hundred seven through that, but they're about a hundred and fifty online, so it's not really that big of a difference. So if they would have to calibrate it anyway, obviously just go with that? Buy everything for them?
And if you want, I mean, I've got, we don't necessarily have to do the paperwork on the scales right now. I do have the paperwork for the grant, but that does have to be signed by you folks.
Okay.
We can get that signed and sent in and see if we can get approval. The price on the scales haven't changed since May, I got a new updated price today, it's the same price. He didn't say whether it's going up, down or indifferent, so I think we have a little time on that.
What do you think about, you all told us, the last night?
Yeah, worst case scenario, always tell them, we're sorry, we changed our minds, keep your money.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, you can get awarded, doesn't mean you have to take it.
Right, right.
And it also might have a year to do it, please, so you can go into the next budget too if you need it to. Alright, can you see?
So there's the grant paperwork, not much to it. I'll give, I'll leave this with you too, that's all the paperwork on the scales.
Right, you've got to put the purchase price in here though.
Well, I think you have to decide whether you're doing the printer or not to figure it out.
I didn't check off the box whether you had fifty percent or anything like that.
Yeah, have purchase price available to spend at this time.
Maybe write them on, they got texts all over the area, so if anything happens, you know, I've checked all the backup on it and whatnot.
Do you think that all of our doing like, I know it's not as accurate, but like a, just a tire gauge? Like, you know, putting up a piece of plywood on a tire and measuring the, you know, tire length, measuring the pressure change, calibrated for weight?
Have you heard of such a thing?
No. It wouldn't be very accurate.
No, it is interesting.
They use it for cattle.
Oh.
So if you get a large enough tire, I've read about doing it with either air or water, but you, you calibrate it obviously so you know what it is net and then you know that increasing pressure is, by like linear would return. I don't know what the capability would be, this is five thousand pounds, I don't know how much a cow weighs, like a thousand pounds?
Fifteen, two.
Fifty-one or two hundred, you have two tires, next to each other.
So I'm sorry, I was reading, I was trying to get information about, we said not to move forward with the deal tonight, or?
You don't have to if you don't want to.
Well, saying if we want to just apply for the grant and get a guarantee that we're getting a grant.
Oh, okay.
But we should make a decision whether or not we're going to include the scale, because we have to put a value in there.
I would suggest you put the value with the printer and then if you decide not to do the printer, then you're just taking less grant money.
That is true, yeah. So what's the value of the, I have blue and black?
Twenty-five seventy-four.
So anyway, we can include calibration for five years from the grant?
I would doubt it. Because I think they're in, you know, they want to give you money for, for an item, not a service.
Be the budget, because we know we're not yet, okay. So technically, that's a one year, I guess. Yeah, alright, so let's take a motion to.
I'll move that we apply for a grant from New Hampshire Beautiful for half of twenty-five seventy-four for a scale and printer.
Second, alright, any further discussion? Any of those who can, say aye, aye? Alright. So how do you count this, okay?
Aye, that's enough of that.
I got a P O, I'm a truck inspector, yeah.
So Ed, can I?
I did have one other thing, actually.
Can I keep this and I'll scan it to you with a signature, are you good with that?
Sure, I think I'm going to send us a narrative along with it.
That's okay, I just want to keep it electronic and electronic by it.
Sure, sure. I don't know, I don't think this is under, maybe we stopped doing, with a pickup truck with a lattice work in the back.
Alright, bring it up.
Yeah. Ken Mullock was in wanting to dump some stuff when the transfer station was closed this afternoon because he forgot that we changed to winter hours. Where do we sit with him?
Where do we sit with him, did he let it go out?
No, a letter has not gone out, he was going to come in and he has not come in and I can get a letter out to him.
We're going to see him, I know, on Wednesday, so I need to just tell him, no.
May I, so, do you want to come in and sign a letter? How do you want me to, you get a friend?
Yeah, um, yeah, we, his options are that his ex-wife or his daughter, he gets service for their vehicles and he can drive their vehicles to the transfer station to dispose of their properties. He cannot use his own vehicle.
Okay, he has his own pickup truck?
I get that.
And it's a newer truck, so I know it, I didn't check it for a sticker? I just assume it doesn't have a sticker?
No, it's not. He cannot get a sticker on his own, it won't have to be, they have to get stickers and he has to drive their vehicle.
Okay, sounds good.
Or, or wagon behind their vehicle or whatever, but.
Can't be his truck, yeah, okay.
I saw the letter that found out.
Well, and he was told by the board, he was hoping he would reconsider, but you were pretty direct about that when he was here.
Yeah, not surprised.
Well, I was here that night and I thought that was pretty direct.
It was pretty, it was pretty clear, but, but we were going to send him a follow-up letter, so we will get that out.
Okay, sounds good.
Alright, George.
It is time of year for truck inspections and oil changes on a big trucks, so I can P O for the city of Dover out of vehicle maintenance for a thousand dollars.
Alright. I'll move purchaser one seven four six to the city of Dover for, it's a, two vehicles.
Look, the three trucks, we have it here right now.
Thousand dollars for all vehicle inspections and oil change.
Secondly, okay, so is, is, is this a price he's giving you or is this a not to exceed?
They're already done, they just did.
Oh, this is the price?
It's going to be less than that.
It's going to be less than that, so not to exceed, okay.
But, I mean, we, you know, it's, when we send them over there, we don't even see the bill for what, a month, two weeks?
Six months or something.
Okay, I just want to make sure that.
But there was no problems with the trucks, so we're.
Should be all set, okay.
Yeah, so, usually about four hundred dollars on oil change on a big truck and, you know, so it's.
Alright.
Last year, we got the surprise, we needed sprays, this year, everything's good.
Alright, well, that's good news, it's one good news anyway, alrighty.
All the trucks have been undercoated.
Okay, good.
No.
Any other discussion, questions? All those who can, say aye, aye, okay.
I tried to get an answer on the new truck today, but no one's returning their calls, so. I'm going to pound on the door pretty soon.
I would do it just whenever later.
So what will happen if we don't know?
I'll be very, very busy if I crack.
We'll be.
You take the bump of this, but not, what's an I say, so it really is unacceptable.
Prove this and.
You know.
You have the ready to buy it.
All it needs to hold up is the, the body.
It's ridiculous, you know, it's, my guess is, a body came in and somebody buys more trucks than us and that ended up in somebody else's truck, but I can't prove that, so. You know, when I initially made arrangements with them, that truck was going to be there for their open house in June.
Yeah.
All set up, so.
Alright, well, good luck. Hound, hound to hound.
I will let you know as soon as I know something.
Okay.
And as you all know, the five months project is done.
That's very nice.
And we're going to pave church street tomorrow, so that will be out of the way. It'll slide in the next day with the coverage in there, so.
That looks really good. Nice job. Alright gentlemen, thank you very much.
Thank you. Good luck, thank you.
Can you ask those ladies to come in?
Sure.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
You have your own show in town.
Yeah.
Hello.
Hi.
Hello. Sorry, that was a name quicker than us. All right. Do you want a copy?
I have extras here in the middle.
That's good.
If I need one, my printer does not like this at all.
Do you have Raleigh in it?
No.
So this is a new.
Raleigh, right?
Yes, Raleigh, do you need a copy? Because you could just, I don't have a copy, so you can hand those all the way back.
Is that just one right there?
Oh.
There are three different P's.
Yeah, there's Raleigh, senior, and Jeff, sorry, um, and Jeff P. All right, who's going first?
I'll go first, and I'll go first because I can give you, um, overall for all of us, and then I can break it down to Raleigh. So what you're looking at right here is definitely just Raleigh, but on the side, there's a sidebar off to the right, and at the top, it'll tell you how much, uh, altogether we're asking for, rec as a whole, which would include the senior program and team. Um, so this year combined, we're asking for sixty-three thousand, five hundred and seventy-seven dollars. Uh, so last year, we asked for nine hundred dollars less than that. Uh, Camp Raleigh, so I can tell you this year that for Camp Raleigh, for the twenty-twenty budget, we are asking for a total of forty-eight thousand, four hundred and sixty dollars, which is, I don't know, about almost three hundred dollars less than what we asked for last year. Uh, so, I'm not sure what questions you might have that I can answer right off, but.
Yeah, why don't you go through it and give the highlights, and then they'll have a sense.
So, one of the things that, not much, overall, not much is really changing this year, we're not changing, we're not asking for more, we're not asking for less, our key comes the same, and I think we all know why, it's because we still have to sort of, um, turn the balance. Yeah, I think we're still struggling to find some balance and get some, uh, strategy in place to make sure that we can eventually earn some money and pocket it. Um, but, so the only thing that's changed really is the tuition, so we're asking for a little bit more tuition rates, so we're gonna raise revenue by ten dollars, and we're gonna raise non-revenue by twenty dollars. And weekly, we're gonna raise that by five dollars a week, and same with non, non-residence is the same as five dollars a week. Everything else is pretty much the same, again, nothing has changed until we can figure out how to stabilize the program going forward. Um, at that time, if we do stabilize, we can start asking for some balance, but right now, we're not comfortable doing that.
So it's revenue of fifty thousand, sixty-two dollars, and the overall budget asks us sixty-three thousand, seven, so.
So the difference between those two numbers is senior and teen.
Oh, okay.
So.
Yeah, this is just Raleigh.
Yeah, this is just Raleigh right here, but again, I thought it was important for me to start off so that we can, I can give you the overall nows for the corner, to see how that is referenced somewhere.
So she's got, on that, on this one, Miles, there's the income and expense for just Camp Raleigh?
Yep. So does this include, um, raises for people?
No, we've kept things the same, definitely kept things the same.
We're trying to have a. Our counselors anyway go between ten and eleven dollars an hour, so depending on longevity, so I think we're, we're gonna be down a couple of counselors that were the higher paid ones, so we might be able to filter down that.
So the way the, the last year, the way that we figured the, uh, we actually figured out salaries for counselors is we took an average. So we knew that they were some ten dollar an hour, and we knew we'd fall way up to eleven dollars an hour, so we took an average and figured out that way. We didn't change it this year, we didn't, uh, change the way that we figured out how that was gonna happen, because there's still gonna fall in between.
So, one thing that came up this year that hadn't was a space issue, you had, you had any budget for alternate spaces down this way?
We're gonna hope that that is a better situation, I'd like to do it.
Well, they did, majority of all the projects that would affect the program, and the gym won't be done again for another five to ten years, so that we should be available, and the hallways were done, so they don't need to have the gym to store the stuff, because the hallways are being, you know, so I mean, a lot of the stuff that happened just happened all in one year, unfortunately.
And the Legion was very generous and offered us the space at limited or no cost.
It was a cost, yeah, and we only had to use it one day out of the whole week, so that was, that was a big thing.
And I did have a conversation, we wrote you about a month ago, and just to be sure, as I was putting this together, does he suspect anything maybe coming up that could displace us again, and he is almost positive that there is not.
Nothing that drastic, that you're not gonna be able to put classroom.
Nothing like that.
Yeah, it was really the, the gym, to the gym thing, once you start out, him including on the floor, you can't use it for, for weeks, so, because it's happy and all of that, so, that was the most, because you could have probably gone into a, another classroom, and then the floors on the other side were being done. So it just wasn't multiple things that affected this year, I don't think that, I hope.
And we didn't really get any backlash from parents, I would say it was a very easy, one day that we went to Legion, because we sent down information the night before, and that was good.
I think the communication was, you know, you know the difference.
Yep. Does anyone have any questions on it? All right, and who's got the teen?
The teen. Um, so yeah, if we go to the teen, our, teen has really remained pretty much the same as well. I think it's a little bit less that we're asking, because we have, um, kind of pulled our second, um, counselor salary out of that, um, last year, because we haven't really felt, we didn't hire anybody for it this year, so it was not used, and unless we get bombarded with kids, I don't really see that we need it. So, um, a ten to a fifteen kid, um, average per week can be handled by one. And, uh, I'd like to see a little bit, you know, we had an issue with our later weeks had lower numbers than we really liked, so there's kind of a, you know, how do we cancel those weeks if we get the low numbers like that? Everything kind of evened out, so we stayed in the plus this year, so, um, you know, the whole thing with transportation, I think, is the hardest thing. You know, I drove again this year, and that just saves a ton of money, so, I have fun while I do it, so it's okay. So, yeah, so we went through training, um, our, our director last year did not need any training, so we did not need that fun. Um, our payroll taxes, I believe, will go down from that number because there was payroll, we were keeping her salary at the same. Um, so the supplies is what's a big expense, that's all the tickets and money, uh, entry fees for what we do. You know, my, I guess if, I don't know if it's appropriate to talk about at this point in time, but if we can do something easier about those tickets, you know, the process is just, the process is, takes a lot of time, and, um, it seems to have multiple steps, you know. My, my preference would be honestly to set aside money into a Visa card or something like that, and let the director take care of all that, as opposed to, um, you know, giving Caroline a call while I'm at the York Rec Department and saying, hey, can we put you on the phone so you can charge these?
It's difficult when you get a place that will only accept cash or credit card on the spot, and you can't go in with a check or be coerced for it at a later date.
So I don't know that, how that works, but, you know, we collect all this money in advance, so if you can put that in a portion of it aside, you know, to do that, it would be, and have a debit card attached to that, I don't know, so, um, like the three thousand that we're gonna use for activities.
It's complicated because the advisor has, the auditor has advised not to have a separate bank account or a separate credit card for people who aren't actually employees, so you could potentially do that to, for rec directors. They're temporary employees, they're seasonal employees.
Yeah, because Patty's an employee, or she was an employee.
But you have to raise the threshold for the purchase order limit, because the, you know, it costs three hundred and fifty dollars to get into some of those places with that.
But she was saying, get a Visa debit card, and let them utilize a Visa debit card to buy those tickets, how does that work for you?
Um, I'm not. I don't know if it's allowed, and we can check into it, I would be concerned about, um, what happens with leftover funds, and can we like transfer leftover funds back into.
General fund?
Back, you know, the bank account, um, it would still fall within the provisions of the purchasing policy, so you'd still have to revise the purchasing policy or something to accommodate the larger expense. Um, but do you have the same protections from fraud and, and like that, that you do with a credit card? I mean, there's just a bunch of questions about it, but.
Can you walk in any state and showing what is entirety to the debit card?
Right.
Like you would a credit card.
Well, and, and sometimes it's difficult to get receipts, so, you know, to my mind, a credit card would be better, they'd have a threshold that allows them what they need to do, I'm not sure that a.
And you have to say even showing they've done it.
Right, like, so what would be the benefit of the debit card, like, you know, I don't know that it would accomplish anything other than a credit card ultimately.
Well, we don't get credit cards to temp employees.
Another way to think about it is if we do have a permanent rec director, some of these places, like the one Kelly called about for Caroline, they send different rec departments throughout Maine and New Hampshire, um, allotment of tickets, so we could have ordered our tickets and be sent directly to the rec director or whoever here in the town. I know Exeter does it, I know, um, like she said, York does it, um.
They don't buy those in advance, do they?
They do buy their, they buy them in bulk, North Berwick does it, but, um, where did I end up? In, um, outside of St. Luke, um, over the summer, and they were given the opportunity to buy them again in the beginning of August. Like, you could buy them throughout the summer if you rain at them. But it, it's also, we're not bulk.
Right.
We have up to fifteen, that's not a bulk purchase. You know, I mean, I, I don't think that's a bulk, I would think, yeah, city of Dover's gonna buy two hundred of them.
Right, that's a bulk purchase.
Your, or your.
Always, right.
Yeah, yeah. And like, so different venues in Maine, we work with these rec departments, um, like York Wild Kingdom, and when I was in getting my tickets, they only ordered like a dozen or two extra anonymous, so maybe it is feasible. It's something that, it needs further research, but, uh, a debit or credit card would be easier than having three or four different methods, like when the purchase order comes through, giving Caroline permission, or having one of us put it on our credit cards to be reversed, or just hopefully have one, one method like streamlined system. Can you post, so they have an activity expense line, can you post a gift card, uh, Visa, uh, debit card against the expense line?
We can do it with a credit card, um.
Still getting a little tricky?
It's, it's just a whole different kind of bag of worms, and so theoretically, anytime you spend money, we can attribute it to something, we should attribute it to something, um.
But it's like giving someone a hundred dollars in cash, you'd be on a hundred dollars on card, I mean, seriously though.
And you're hoping they're gonna spend it, you know, at the place where they're directed to, not that, you know, it, it, there's just no policy to cover that process.
Well, she's still, you have to still come home with a receipt and, and.
Right, so, so what's the difference, and why not just a credit card?
Because then we don't have to hassle you as much.
Well, if you have your, like, I'm saying, if the rec director has.
I'm trying to help you, Caroline.
You know, I appreciate that, um, it's a policy thing, so I, I don't think that the, um, that a Visa card offers anything that a credit card wouldn't offer, but it might not give you the same kind of fraud protection, but it would still have to be covered by policies. So, you know, you would still only give it to whomever you would give it to, according to the policy.
Well, I think the credit card also has to be in somebody's name, which right now, it's on your name, so a gift card wouldn't have to be under her name at all.
That's true, but you would want that for accountability purposes, and we can get a credit card in a rec director's name if it's, I mean, I don't know what the, I don't know that the policy allows for temporary seasonal employees, and that's, you know, a policy decision, but you can get a credit card in somebody else's name, that's not really a big deal. It does require some planning, that they have to be hired with enough notice that we know who they are, and we can get the security questions filed, the paperwork and, and like that, but we can do it. I just think that, you know, the Visa card is of concern for the exact reason that it's a convenience, which makes it tricky.
Plus it gets lost.
Well, I was just gonna say that.
You know, it gets lost, it's not anybody's name, yeah, it's, you know.
Can you get another card for the balance if the other one's lost?
Well, no, you have to buy it on a card.
Exactly, so you lost that money on that card that's left, you know, so that, at least with a credit card, you have, you lose it, cancel it, get another one.
I think, um, the debit card makes more sense, that you just start taking out money out of account.
But if we had a schedule at the beginning of the season of everywhere you were gonna go, and with every place, we knew whether or not they would invoice us, because plenty of people did invoice us, and that was, that was the best option, um, and if not, then a credit card's required. If, you know, if I could just spend forty-five minutes calling six places and saying, this is the date, up to ten people, here's my credit card number, and then in the end, on that day, they would charge me for how many people showed up, and email me a receipt, you know, if the days are set up in advance, I don't think anybody else has to be involved, and I can just, Chuck or myself can go down the list and set up the arrangements.
So that's a lot of pre-planning before the.
It's pre-planning, you know, that's the other, you know, with planning, we can alleviate some of this.
And it, it has been pre-planned, been published when registration goes out, and we have checked with all the vendors, and some of them Caroline knows, will, which ones will invoice us, and I think the most difficult one to pin down is Front House Rushdown, because it's, they don't invoice, it's pay at the gate, um, kind of thing.
Maybe go somewhere else.
Yeah, and then like you pay where you go, frankly, yeah.
Well, and then, you know, there's.
But you had some surprise trips for teen, you had the one that she had to pay out of her pocket because you couldn't go down to the one in Broadway in Dover.
Yeah, that was the last one.
But that's, that's a change that would be affected by this.
That was the director's choice, um, to a certain extent, because a couple of the kids didn't sign their waiver, instead of having them sit out or get the waiver signed before they arrived, she decided to go to a different venue where they could all participate, so that.
You're just saying it's, it's a change, it's another, it was another change.
Yes. And unfortunately.
That needed something to, like, so she did, she put down the credit card, so why do you think she did that?
And unfortunately, two of us who had been in contact with her about the schedule were both out of town, and it was just, um.
But those things can happen, like, you know, we went to the movies last year, and it was a rainy day, so, yeah, and I pulled out my credit card for that, so.
And, like, even like this year, we tried a new venue, we went to Copo Key, and it, and when we did Water Country Two, it's like, there are special deals that you need, like, credit cards for a week in advance or something, they'll run it special. If you buy your tickets seven days in advance, you get ten dollars off, or something like that.
Something to keep on them.
Another change to the teen budget is the first aid CPR, we put fifty dollars in the line to cover the cards that training happens.
Yeah, but that, that isn't the cost for one person.
No.
So you're putting it all in teen and nothing in Raleigh?
We have three, we have two in Raleigh.
Okay, so fifty dollars is, is too much for one, you only have one person, right?
Yes.
Director. But.
How many, how much, I guess we don't even know how much the cards were.
It was, they told me twenty.
Now, for both first, that was both first aid and CPR?
Yes, well, I don't think there's one, I don't think they get a credit card first aid, do they? So.
You know, it's gonna CPR. You will also notice that there's a change in background checks and that is to cover an employee and a volunteer if we have more, like Kelly, to drive. So if, like, our volunteer needed CPR first aid, we could provide them, they could get a card for us to.
Okay, sorry, that's what it's worth, that's mine.
They're ten each.
They're ten each, okay.
So that would be to cover a volunteer.
Okay.
Yes, work on the line, right?
So, um, we are also, we added in a couple of lines to the um teen camp that weren't there before. We're asking for two hundred and fifty dollars to get a cellphone. Camp Raleigh has a cellphone, but the teen camp doesn't have a cellphone. And that would cover a cellphone for them, so that they're not pulling out their personal phone to make calls and text parents. And then possibly an email address to, for the camp for all, uh, teen camp director. So that, um, they have access to Sports Engine and to all of their campers who can send out mass emails. Um, we were having to do that this year on there. We have several weeks until they were able to get a master list. And then, um, we added in three hundred dollars to cover registration. So if we wanted to upgrade, um, Sports Engine or something like that, or look into other options for registration programs online and. That were available to us, we can have that to upgrade our capabilities from what we currently use. And as you will know, it is down from what we asked for over the last two years.
Any questions on teen?
And the income is, um, more, so we're expecting a two hundred and fifty dollar difference between the income and the expenses.
Questions?
No.
Okay, so now we're on senior. Do you have a senior budget or have revenue?
I got one. I did. Um.
Did I not pick the right one?
That was the, you're right, I have. So that was the only attachment, I think Celia today was the revenue. So do you have a, an expense sheet?
I do, but it, the comments came out kind of funny.
So you can talk to them, right?
Yes.
Can I borrow your sheet for a moment?
We can talk about it while she's starting.
So, at this point in time, the last two years, we've requested three hundred dollars for senior programming. In twenty, the end of twenty eighteen, we did a survey to the whole community to find out what you, what they were looking for. We have the survey results and, um, a couple of the things were connecting with, um, the older population, with the younger population, um, and continuing add speakers, stuff like that. So we have three hundred dollars that is in our budget for this year that we like, we're planning on doing a coffee hour with, um, to get the seniors together and start discussing what they wanna see in the future. Um, and we are looking at venues now, talking to different people around town, where we could hold that. And then in the future, we would like to expand our programming to include speakers and stuff during our coffee hour, bringing that together. Fulfilling their request of getting the older and younger populations of town together. Um, so we're requesting an increase of three hundred dollars up to five hundred dollars from the town this year. Um, to help cover some of the expenses of speakers and, um, different, um, venues. So, um, a hundred and fifty dollars is, um, well, right, this year we're planning for a hundred dollars to put out signs and notices and stuff like that. And next year, we're hoping, um, a hundred and fifty dollars to use the, um, and we may not use it all. But that's to make signs for the atriums and stuff and to hit them up around town, so people can, um, know what that is. And then, um, the supplies would be the food, the drinks, the, um, any paper products and any, um, craft groups that come out of the, um, craft supplies that come from senior craft groups that wanna start up with that. Um, and then you'll see we put money aside for an activity fee, which is, um, presenters, speakers and money's paid out if they wanna go to. Some other communities do, um, monthly out to breakfast at a restaurant or they do trips twice a year to casino or something. So that was what goes, go to. Um, we put money into a venue cost or rental in case we need to rent a space, like the Legion or something like that, we can offset some of the costs. And then, um, we put a small amount into office supplies, so if we need to, once we get the group up and running, if there's certain. One of the ways people said they wanted to be contacted was through the mail and this would cover postage announcements directly to those addresses of people who were interested. And so we're not planning to do a townwide mailing again. We've done that, we've got our results back. This is just targeted groups.
Did you get addresses on the response that sent you?
It was all anonymous. And we broke it down and, um, as one committee member pointed out last Monday night, they may have not actually gotten it until later in the year when the open studios happened because they have a Dover address. And I was, um, it may not have gone to the Dover and Summersworth addresses that are technically voluntary residents. Um, and so they may not have been able to respond even though they're a senior citizen. The other thing was is that we, one of the questions we did ask was over sixty-five or under sixty-five. And of the thirty-five that responded, about half of them responded over thirty, or over sixty-five. And the rest were under sixty-five and two came via, two or three came via email. So they did not, they were just comments. They didn't even, um, address the questions on there. So I have no idea of some of those people, handful of people who responded or not. I know one of the seniors who did respond was put down seniors helping seniors. They want to see like an RSVP group or something like that, which is Retired Seniors Volunteer Program, where they go out and like help each other go to the grocery store or something. And so if somebody can't go there, another retired person would go and help them get their groceries or pick up medication or something for them. A lot of comments came back about the ice rink. They wanted to see the ice rink up and running again and wanted to know why we weren't doing the ice rink and that it would be open to everybody in the community and not just to certain populations.
There's an ice rink?
There was.
There was.
Once upon a time, um, a liner was purchased to build one to the left of the fire station. It was maintained by volunteers, which is why it went away because it was a lot of work. And then the volunteers, a lot of the people enjoyed it to participate in its maintenance, because every time it snowed, it had to be shut off and things like that. And nobody really stepped up to why it had to be there.
And you relied on the fire department to water it to keep it iced, you know, so that was a, an effort, I mean, it's not a burden.
Right, and it couldn't be permanent from what I understand, because the fire department, which field or something, is a matter of.
That's the end.
So.
So, yeah, it just, when you rely on total volunteers to do something, it kind of has a way of going away sometimes, just because of a certain few and.
So we have talked to, once we get this up and running, about talking to the principal at the school and to some other community groups and seeing if we can get, um, the school kids to meet up with the seniors, like during the week. I know the kindergarten, first and second graders walk down to the library once a week or once a month and maybe interacting with seniors, having a coffee hour with seniors that sometimes that they can interact and so that, that goal or request gets met.
Also, you know, it's good to bring the young with the seniors because they, they just get so much enjoyment out of that. I bet you if you got the school involved, they could have something in the grade school, you know, um, have, um, certain grade levels participate with them. I think that would be great.
And I do know that two, there are two or three Cubs Cup groups that have ties in the community. Um, that, um, two of them are, one of their goals is to do a community service project. So meeting up with the seniors and helping them out might be an ideal group for those, an ideal thing for those groups to fit.
Hey, any questions for the rec departments? Any other comments? Any other comments for the, the teen?
Thank you guys so much.
Um, I guess I have a comment. I, I would like to acknowledge Dee, Dee Neathock here. As, as much as I, I wanna hurt you for leaving.
We're on camera.
I, I, I think it's important that we thank her for her time and and all she's done. I appreciate it.
I agree. She listens.
Yes. Important lead that is, yes, is stepping away.
It's, it's bittersweet for sure. It was a hard decision because it's an year and year. It's hard to let go.
Definitely it's hard to let go. But I appreciate everything that you do as well. I do have a question for you though. I'm not sure you realize that it's still just upon a committee that's not the rec committee, it's recreation.
It's Parks and Rec.
Parks and Rec.
You're still in Parks and Rec.
Would you be still willing to?
That meant nothing.
I'm gonna break her neck.
Are you still willing to stay on there?
I won't, it won't be a lot of work, I promise.
Okay, well, let me think about that.
Okay.
You have not yet had a meeting due to this other responsibility ever, to give you a sense of workload, but it's.
But this is the part, um, so, but you think about it, because you, both of you are, right? Yep, so. I think you're my better half on that. They are two separate things, so if you're not, you know, somebody, you can choose out.
Uh, that would be interesting. Yeah, I would, I was actually talking to a husband about that the other night.
Or you belong.
Two of you can search that out.
It's time.
Yes.
So I ha- I did have one question for this life board. I know Camp Raleigh and Teen Camp are supposed to be revenue-renting, well, bringing in stuff. But is that across the board or is that only those two programs? Like, is seniors supposed to be bringing in money? Because the committee had talked about that, at least to begin with, we didn't want to pass off the costs onto seniors. But if that's something that we need to look at for the future, something we wouldn't need to put in the budget. Uh, fee collection or donations and grants to support the program.
Um, yours is a really, I think it's a really small budget, so.
Yeah, I mean, I think it took one from five hundred to five thousand.
We would be talking about a different story, so. I think we just need to get it on its feet.
Get it going.
Get it going. Um, that's our opinion, right? And we do still have, everyone still has to vote on it. But I don't think we have to do something about that.
Okay, just something that came to mind recently.
Yeah. I don't think we can outnumber seniors and if this is a start, like, can they go and start doing things, I think it's a great opportunity, like, thank you for doing this as well, because it is a good thing to.
Yeah, that was part of the reason I decided to turn.
You might be surprised to see how many people step up and you may not have hardly any cost on your own. Seriously, you might, you might be surprised.
And one of the ideas was not, was to have it at a location here in town, like at, um, the Black Bean. And then people could come and socialize and buy their own coffee and it would be no cost to us, but it would be beneficial to, to, to both groups, the seniors and Black Bean. And I know my parents just got connected in Vermont and one of the things that they do for their seniors is they do five dollar lunches at the restaurants once a month and it's offset by the town. But the, you get thirty people coming in for lasagna, the Italian food place or something like that. And the restaurant gets three or four hundred dollars for some of the five dollar donation.
Um, you give an opportunity, go on Elliot's website, it depends, I think doing some research, and they have a wonderful program for seniors on there too. Have you gone, have you seen it?
Uh, we had Heather come talk to us.
Yeah, but go and look at all the things that they do. It's, it's.
I know she said.
They have more funding than we do, but, you know, it just gave us an idea, is, um.
Um, they do have a gentleman that does seniors and they, he, we did hear that they did two or three trips a week, like twice a month, they go out for breakfast.
Yeah.
And then they do a one trip and they have a bus and they put them all in there.
But they have their own bus, so they can do that because they have a.
I can, I have a van, I could sell it down. But anyway, just take a peek down there.
I can do that. It was very informative, so.
Okay.
All right, ladies, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Do you have Walker that we still have in public?
Yes, but it can go to the end.
We can skip that one in here under three and.
Sure.
No, seems not.
Oh, I forgot about that. Did you check outdoors? I mean, is someone sitting out there?
I don't think so, the door's been opened.
I forgot about that. No? Okay, well, then we will see. Um, twenty twenty budget recreation, well, that's done, right?
Yes.
And then budget planning. Um, so next weekend, next Monday is another budget workshop.
But we're gonna notice it if it's all right with you for a regular meeting and and you, we can handle mostly budget, but, um, for George's non-public, for example, um, it'll allow you flexibility in what you choose to talk about, so that if there's something else that comes up, you can do that with the intention of still going into, um, mostly budget. Um, it also depends on what we get through tonight, because there are some time-sensitive things on this agenda.
Okay, that's fine. Um, so when we go into non-public for the, um.
I'm sorry, is that six o'clock next week? Is that?
Oh, I don't remember. Was it? I'll have to look it up. Oh, okay. Um, so we have to go back into non-public for welfare. Can we go back and also for non-public for the personnel? Because I need some updating on what that was about. Like, I think I know what it's about, but on the highway.
Okay. Yes, fine, yes, yes.
I need to, yeah.
So at the, at the bottom of the agenda, we can do, um, it's already listed for personnel. We can add welfare and do them together.
Oh, okay, very good. Okay, that's fine. All right, very good. Um, budget planning, so we have heard from every one now, right? I mean, every department has, so we have all of our departments, oh, and all of that data is put on the Excel spreadsheet for the.
Um, Rex did some very recent updates, so I need to check to make sure their bottom line is the same, but otherwise, yes, everything's in, everything's in spreadsheet.
And what about the revenue side of it?
I have revenues ready to talk about. Um, we need to talk about, our report with the state is due now about twenty nineteen revised revenues. Um, but at the same time, since we're talking about what we've brought in so far this year, we can talk about where it fits in the revenue budget and budget for next year.
Next Monday or tonight?
Um, we do not have to figure out twenty twenty tonight.
Okay.
It would be really helpful if I can get a consensus from the board about twenty nineteen figures.
Yeah.
Because I need to enter them in the portal and then print something for you to sign.
So we can. Yeah, gotcha, yeah, okay, so we do need to get that going. So that's C, right? And, and two thousand nineteen re-budget, which we've already done.
Yes. Yes, I, you know, it's a, it's a cursory look. You all have a copy of it. It's, it's, you know, a document in flux that we can revise at any time, but you have it, yes.
Yeah. Yeah. But we've already.
You didn't, you didn't officially approve it. I don't know that you have to. It just, it's a worksheet. It shows you.
It's not changing the bottom line, so it's not really, so you need to have it, unless there's any questions whatsoever.
Right, so.
No, no.
And then we, we did, it was very conservative and we're still in very good shape and I mean, we're touching.
As it gets tighter, it might be something that you wanna.
You don't talk about it, yeah. And so, um, so estimated revenues, um, do you have that now? Do you want to talk about that now or do you?
We can talk about that, but can we go back to budget planning and see like, um, so we're gonna do Monday.
Monday.
Do we need, do you wanna set up other dates for how many, like, how many more workshop nights?
Well, we're, we're getting really close.
Yes, I know.
The third week of October is when we start with the budget made, so we gotta be done then.
Yes.
Because that's, that's when they're meeting with all the department heads. So, I mean, they, they do it by department. They all present it.
Right, but we kinda have a sense of your, your big picture.
We have to have our big picture.
You know, it's not just about getting your individual.
So we have to, um, I would say we have to have it at least done by the second week of October.
It's the third week.
It's the third week that you started.
So we're meeting with the budget committee.
Yes.
Are you putting that on?
I am.
Okay.
I should.
So. Yep, so we, yeah, so, um, so this was a board meeting. Next week is gonna be strictly budget with a few things that we have to get out and done first and then do budget. And then I would feel the next one for the, uh, the budget as well with the, just the minimum of what we have to get done.
September first, we'll see the transfer station and strike the regional planning.
Yes, that's just a note that strike the regional planning is coming on October seventh also. Like that was a pre-arranged.
That was supposed to be a regular meeting.
Yes. So I can rearrange that.
No, no, because we, well, are they coming on the same day as the transfer station?
Yes, so.
So we have to come back here.
Um, or we can send them there.
Okay. And what is this for?
The director wants to meet with the board to introduce herself and talk about what SRPC does, um, as the Regional Planning Commission, um, the services that they offer and find out um, what they can do for us and what they're already doing that maybe we're not aware of and just sort of touch base about things. We do, we are dues paying members, which means we do have a, we get a certain level of service per year for those dues. Um, they can do like one training for the planning board every year, for example. Um, they're just there as a planning resource, but then also they speak on our behalf when, when it comes to things like the regional transportation, like tenure transportation plan and things like that, um, with representations from town, you know, from the town.
So, all right, so we can keep that meeting, um, and then the following week is Columbus Day weekend, right? So we're not meeting, at least on Monday, unless we only meet on Tuesday. Um, if we're not done, we have to meet sometime that week.
Right.
Because we, we just, we have to be done.
So I'll get as far as, um, so the thirtieth and then the seventh isn't gonna be, but, you know, you can do budget on the seventh, but the fourteenth is Columbus Day. So the bud, the budget committee is starting to deal with the budget on the twenty-third. That is the third week. They're starting with CIP and highway. So I would, yes, the week of the fourteenth, I would say you've gotta get it.
They gotta get it.
Because they're gonna want the budgets ahead of time.
Yeah.
The eighteenth, the Friday of that week, so maybe later that same week of the fourteenth, you have a meeting. Um, the sixteenth, the budget committee's meeting, so Wednesday that week is already booked. Um, they're meeting for third quarter review.
We are?
The budget committee's meeting the week.
And then we're doing the.
And then you're meeting the following week to start budget presentation, pretty much.
Okay. All right, so it's either Tuesday or Thursday?
Yes.
What are your days, after Mondays, so how does your schedule look?
Um, I can't, I have nothing.
Tuesday or Thursday?
I prefer Thursday.
You prefer Thursday?
In this particular instance.
Okay, how about you?
It's fine.
Okay, why don't we do Thursday then?
Um, the seventeenth, that's October seventeenth.
What time? What time can you start?
Five thirty.
What time, what will start? You don't have to work till five.
I don't get out of, I don't get out of work. I'm just here. It's fine, whatever time.
I mean, I can do five thirty. Can you do five thirty?
I can do five thirty.
All right, let's do five thirty. You're here?
Yep.
Okay. If you're comfortable, you can just let us know. Okay, so, um, and that's budget. All right. Um, okay.
Okay, so now if you'd like, we can talk about revised estimated revenue. Um, I gave you this spreadsheet at our last meeting. It had a green column and a blue column. It was a spreadsheet, but it's here. I don't, the focus is not so great and.
So you shut off the lights?
Well, it helps some, but I know that it doesn't fully help. But it does.
Yeah, you're right.
Um, but it's still a little bit more legible.
It's so small though.
Um, so I can, I can make it bigger.
Does someone have to get up on a chair to adjust the lens or?
Um, we tried that once and we're not even really able to figure out what made that.
Well, that's better, really.
Yeah, okay, so the first tab here is a spreadsheet, um, much like you're, you're used to seeing. It's got our categories and it's got history. You can see from the left, it goes like back to twenty seventeen, so you can see some history with expenses and then it goes to the blue column, which would be the numbers that I'm looking for tonight. I've plugged in suggestions. You can see two columns to the left of blue is actuals of what we've brought in since the first week of, through the first week of September, which is point seven percent of the year. Um, just for reference when you're looking at those percentages. So, so we're taking this information on this spreadsheet in the format that we might more commonly look at these things. And then we're going to the MS, um, four thirty-four page and this is where we have to plug it in to, this is the state's spreadsheet. So, um, again, the blue column is what I'm looking for for tonight. Um, this is actually green on my screen. It's not green here, but those are the numbers that we can work on over the next couple of weeks for twenty twenty. So, um, where there are dashes, those are zeros. So you see resident tax, we don't have a resident tax anymore. That's gone away, so we're down thirteen thousand dollars.
Did we not, we didn't not budget it for because we didn't know whether or not we were gonna, it was gonna pass?
Right, so it was budgeted.
Okay, all right.
So now it's not there.
Yep.
The land use change tax, um, we did get revenue, ninety-two hundred. I don't anticipate that we'd get any more revenue. So, um, I'm gonna run down my suggested numbers here, but then at any time, we can go back and reference the other spreadsheet that has what we've received year to date, if you wanna see how I came up to those things. So the thirty-sixth, one twenty-nine here, payment in lieu of taxes. Um, hydro was, um, that, that's hydro. I've moved hydro to, um, further down where I believe it's more appropriate to put it in this miscellaneous revenue line, this miscellaneous other. These, these account, these numbers on the left-hand side are Department of Revenue account numbers or ranges of account numbers. They set up our chart of accounts in the, in QuickBooks. Like, you know, we, we are following their chart of accounts. So what it says other, other references all the account numbers between thirty, um, thirty-five oh three and thirty-five oh nine. So you can go to the other tab here on the bottom and you can get a sense of what those things, what, what's represented in the other line. So, um, while the term other is frustrating, it, it is a DRA defined term by those account numbers. So I moved, um, I moved hydro to this line other because it just seemed more appropriate there. Um, it was budgeted for ninety, brought it up to one twenty. I've, I've suggested some numbers for twenty twenty. We can talk about those another time, but some of these numbers don't really look like they're gonna change. Um, the, so now that we're at the bottom.
Do you wanna go back up?
Yeah, we can go back up, all right. So, we're down about sixty thousand dollars in this category. You can ignore the green area because we're not filling out all those numbers yet, but we're down sixty thousand dollars in that category. We go to the next category, licenses, permits and fees. And comparing the blue to the column to the left of it, we're pretty much on the mark. We're up by four thousand dollars. Um, the license, the business licenses, that's the junkyard. Um, motor vehicles, we're right on track for reaching the budgeted amount. Um, building permits as well. And then there's other, and other is, um, planning fees. Planning fees are, are up because we've had some big proposals with bigger fees. So, um, again, we can look at any of the detail that you wanna look at, but, so we're up by four thousand in that category. State sources, um, I've budgeted meals and rooms tax the same. We never know what that is until we're actually in the tax rate setting process. At that time, the, the, the state disperses that money. They don't tell you ahead of time what it's gonna be. So I budgeted that to be level for what we received in twenty eighteen. It comes in December. It goes up typically a small amount every year, but it is based on actual revenue received by the state for, um, people staying in hotels and eating at restaurants. It's the taxes received, um, redistributed to all the communities in the state.
So is it a big sum up here and then it does it?
Yes.
So it's not necessarily wrong or, because we don't have any hotels.
Right.
But we have, we have restaurants, so we contribute to that, our, our vendors contribute to that, but it goes into a big pool and then it's dibbly-dub.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, so we can't really predict that, but it's, you know, that's what we received in twenty eighteen and it would be in that ballpark.
Okay.
The highway block grant, that's, um, that number is based on what the state is reporting at this time that it is expecting to give us. Um, that being said, the state hasn't passed their budget, so, you know, it's a little bit of an unknown. Um, the railroad tax has been received. It's a once a year payment, so those are actual funds as well. And then from other governments, this eleven thousand nine hundred, that was budgeted to be half of the radar sign that we were proposing to purchase on the warrant.
The message board?
Right.
Okay.
And it didn't pass, so we didn't get the grant. So while we're down twelve thousand dollars, we also just have the expense, so it's not really a loss.
Okay.
Um, charges for services, um, income from departments, this represents a bunch of things. We can go to the tab for that. So library has a little bit of income, you know, recreation. It, it's all the little miscellaneous bits of income. Transfer station sticker, um, all your demo expenses and scrap metal and, um, all those things. So it's basically police, transfer station, um, parks and rec and library. Revenue is, you know, in other words, income from all the separate depart, the separate departments earning revenue for the towns.
So those numbers in column G are actuals or projection?
Actuals of eighteen, so anticip, so this is not filled out for nineteen. Um, it is filled out for nineteen over here in, um, in the bigger category. Income from departments right here. We budgeted one sixty-three and then today we've, we've received sixty-three percent.
And we're point seven percent.
Right, so, you know.
A little bit, a little bit.
Yeah, we're a, a little bit behind. Um, parks and rec, of course, will be pretty much done except for maybe basketball, but, um, others of those revenues will continue. I mean, transfer station stickers are mostly done, actually not mostly done for the year because they start selling those in November, November and December, so.
For twenty.
For twenty. So, you know, looking at what those revenue sources are, you know, I, I think, you know, it's, it's probably gonna be pretty much on target.
On target with one sixty?
With, with the one sixty-three that we've budgeted, so I kept that level, but this is for the board to decide. Um, so we're even with that little section. Miscellaneous revenue, sale of municipal property, um, that's budgeted primarily for, um, cemetery lots. It can also be for surplus vehicles. The twenty-one thousand eight hundred is what we've received so far year to date, which is the highway vehicle that we sold mostly.
I thought it was like one hundred for that long, right? It was like twenty-two or five.
I thought, I think we've got twenty-one five hundred or something and then.
Look, I thought it was twenty-two five. It's not, it's all right.
So twenty-one eight hundred is what I have received in that line, but I'll, I'll go look into it. Um, so we budgeted for three thousand dollars, so you are, you know, we're, we're making it up there on that line. Interest in investments likewise, um, thanks to our treasurer, we are making far more than we had budgeted for revenue on our, um, tax, our property tax money that comes in. He's transferring that to an investment account. So we only budgeted eight thousand dollars for that because it's relatively new. I'm suggesting thirty-six thousand for that. We have, um, we have received year to date twenty-six thousand dollars. So, um, we're about to hit, you know, ta, like, we're, we're, we're going into a lull of, you know, a low point in holding money, but then it's gonna bump up. It, it depends on when the tax rate's set and when exactly the bills go out. But, you know, the July tax, the June one is the bigger one because the whole cycle is within this tax year. But, you know, most of the revenue, most of the revenue, I think, for the second issue tax bill will be seen in the, in the January. You know, that's when you've got all your money essentially from the November, December tax bill is really in January. So we'll get a little bit of that this year, the revenue, but.
You mean the interest?
Yes, that's what I mean.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Yeah, so in any case, I, um, I bumped that up to thirty-six thousand and then other, we went through other and so that includes, um, I, I included the, the cell, the cell there. So while I removed cell tower in one area, uh, rather, sorry, hydro. Um, so it's a loss in one department. It's a gain in this department. And then, um, we've got our transfers. These things are not, um, they're not, they don't affect the tax rate because they're in other funds. They're revenues from other funds. So the capital reserve funds are for all the Warren articles that were taking a little bit of money or a lot of money from CIP, um, or from some other fund. What is it altogether? Those are the Warren article numbers there that they reference and that's the amount of money altogether for those. Um, and then this is the land use change tax capital reserve fund. Um, I did put, we have a twenty thousand dollar loss in the revenue from the capital reserve funds because it doesn't look like we're doing the boiler this year. But again, that also.
We can spend it.
Right, so that we, we also were saving the five thousand dollars in taxes that we would've spent for that. So, um, that's really it. So, um, this is what I am proposing for a bottom line for revised estimated revenue, um, which is down not quite ten thousand dollars from, um, what we had budgeted, which is not bad considering that thirteen thousand dollars of that was
Yeah.
the resident tax that we're not doing anymore. So does anybody wanna see any, any questions or you wanna see any detail about any of those things? Or do you wanna make any adjustments to anything?
Yeah, I think it'll all spin.
Okay.
Thank you for doing that. I've been absolutely.
Sure, so, um, if I could get someone to make a motion to approve that bottom line and these changes, then I will enter them into the system and you can authorize yourselves to come in and sign them when you get a chance, because I need to upload this to the state as soon as I can.
You can upload it to the state without us saying it to a right?
Well, I, so I, once I, I get your approval tonight, I will upload the information to this, to the portal, but then I have to print it for you to sign.
Yeah.
It's kind, so, so we're gonna talk about that with a different report. It's a really convoluted process where I have to enter it. I don't have the authority to enter it until you give me the authority to enter it, but then I need to print it for you to sign it. But at that point. But at that point, you've already approved it because we've already talked about it. So, I'm having trouble with that process with a different report, but that's what I would suggest for this one is if you would.
So we can so a motion to accept column F's total of one-five-two-six-six-four-one.
Oh, so moved.
So, any questions? There are none, all of those in favor say aye. Aye, aye, okay.
Okay, thank you.
And so you'll let us know when it's ready and we can comment and sign it?
I will.
Still need a separate motion to authorize us to sign it.
That would be good, actually, if you don't mind.
So I make a motion that authorizes to sign the revised.
Just for dotting the i's and the t's because you're gonna have to sign this multi-printed.
So, the motion is to give us authorization to sign the report once it's complete. Second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye. All those opposed, okay, motion passed.
Okay. Go back to the light for a minute.
Okay.
Yeah, ducking cover. The MS four annual report is the next thing on the agenda. That's the, this is the stormwater annual report due September thirtieth. So, you do not have a lot of time to be looking at that and I apologize. This is, we've had some technical difficulties. This is a PDF that does not have shareability unless you have W Pro. It, it's just been difficult, which is why you haven't had this in, you've had a template to look at in advance, but you haven't had this, it's filled out. It is due the thirtieth, which is Monday. So, if you all, now that I have it printed, I can scan it and send it to you if you wanna look it over. I can go over it briefly. It, it essentially affirms that we are doing the things that the permit outlines that we do in the first year. The first year is over, so what did we do about, you know, alerting people about our stormwater management plan? We have public hearing and, you know, we're just sort of giving the details about the things that we did to fulfill the permit requirements of the first year. So, it requires a signature whether you authorize Denise to sign it after you all, like, you know, Monday's the last day, I mean, it, it depends how you wanna handle it, but that's.
Alright, so you can scan this so we can all have the opportunity to read it. And what my suggestion would be is if you're all set with it, you reply back to Caroline, if you're all set with it and.
And otherwise, you can ask me questions and I will reply.
And then she can reply back to you.
To all, but just send me.
And then, once you get both of their authorization, I will comment and sign it.
But I think we should make a motion to authorize.
Well, if my name's on it.
Yeah.
Already.
Right.
So, yep, you can do that, that's fine.
I'll make a motion that we authorize the chair to sign the MS four.
Second?
All those in favor say aye. Aye, okay, so, once you scan it and they all give you the authorization, then I'll be in.
Assuming you all have no questions, then you can comment, that would be great, thank you.
So we already talked about the director's visit on the seventh. MS one and MS one V?
Yes, that's the report I'm having trouble with. So, someone needs to attest under penalties of perjury that they are affirming the numbers on the report before they get submitted to DRA and you can't really get a real report until that's done and so I don't have authorization to do that. So, you can give me authorization to do that or you can delegate one of you, you know, it's just a convoluted process of the portal. But the, so the MS one is the report of total assessed value in the town. The MS one V is the assess, it's the same for the water sewer district. We report on their behalf because it's assessing, they do not have an assessing function. It is just a report of their assessed value and how many exemptions and credits and so forth that they have of people that live in that district. So, just like the, the school has to re, you know, they, they send in reports to the state that affect our tax rate. Likewise, the village district has to as well, even though, because they raise their own rates to support their operating budget, it doesn't affect the tax rate in a practical way, but it does pull us up when they don't do their paperwork, if they were to not do their paperwork, like the school. Like, you know, it's all connected into one big process. So, I have a copy of the MS one, which again is just a copy of, so it's got the total assessed value, it's got what, how much of that is in utilities? How much of that is in elderly exemptions, blind exemptions? You know, how much are those exemptions and how many people are on them and all like that? So, I guess I'm looking for advice about how you would like for me to handle this report. Ultimately, so this is a draft, this is what it looks like, it has all the information on it. It's only a draft, so it's not signable, but it is in effect what you would be signing.
So, you need an authorization to?
I need authorization to push the button to get the official report that you can actually sign.
So, I'll make a motion to authorize Caroline to enter the information, it's into the portal, DIA portal.
Yes.
Second?
Okay, open for discussion. Clarification, you can't go into the portal without our authorization to enter the data?
So, I'm in the, so, I take the information out of assessing and I upload it into the portal and they have the information, but you can't really submit it and process it and print out the official signable report until you certify under penalties of perjury that you are attesting to the veracity of the data.
Which is you.
I don't understand why that would be me, but it's never been delegated to me, so we're just in the first year.
So this is what we're doing is delegating that the, you are the one that's gonna say this information is valid.
And then ultimately, it's gonna come back to, and then you're gonna authorize yourselves to come in and sign this because you will still be the signing authority on the document, but once I push the button and print it.
Are you the maker of the document?
I am the printer of the document, so to speak, but Avatar maintains the assessing information, it's assessing. So, I go into the assessing program and I print this report and then I upload it to the portal.
Okay.
And they take it and hold it until I, I or somebody certifies it and then it's printed as a non-draft copy. It's, it's convoluted, I mean, it's like a lot of extra process.
Why isn't Avatar signing? They're the, they're the ones who make the numbers.
Yes, and they are listed, but they, because you're the governing body. So, you, you are the assessing officials and you delegate that to an assessing firm, but essentially, you know, the buck stops with you and you're in charge of making sure it's correct, even though you contracted out exactly because you're not assessors. So, this is the state, having the state's process.
So, should we, I, I'm known and I'm sounding stupid, but should we send them the same text to them for them to sign it, to file it with our files? And then if they say yes, then you can go forward with it? I mean, accountability is with Avatar, not with you.
Right, and to be clear, as much as this is lots of process upon process, when they have questions and prob, you know, they, they, they compare this report to the previous report and when things don't match and things don't make sense, they ask.
Who's that?
The state.
Yeah, okay.
So, it's, it's not as though it can't be revised if something is really bizarre that isn't clear or doesn't appear to be correct. So, they'll ask me, but they also work with Avatar all the time for a number of other communities and they will ask them as well. It's just the function of you all being in charge officially of what you're in charge of when, you know, you're really the decision-making authority and you have the people working in the different field to actually do those things. You hire an assessing firm to manage these things for you and yet the state is gonna still hold you accountable for the numbers.
We're gonna make sure we're gonna hire Joe Schroner to be assessing.
Right, well, and you, you have to get your, your assessing contracts approved by the state. They, they review the assessing contract to make sure it has the scope that it should have and like that. And I'm sure they would express concerns if they had, you know, parents, concerns to express they do approve the contract. So, the spots for signatures have your names.
Okay.
So.
So we have a, we have a motion on the floor, correct?
Yes, motion on the floor.
For, for.
So, for the board to sign?
No, to authorize you to go in and press the button.
And then further for you all to come in?
Well, then we'll do separately.
Alright.
So then, okay, so all those in favor of the motion for Caroline to be able to process this and hit the button for the assessing report, say aye. Aye, okay, motion's passed. Now we need a motion for us to be able to come in separately and sign this report once you've have needed it and it's printed out. Okay, I'll make that motion.
Second?
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Okay, motion passed.
Thank you.
Okay.
I'm done with that.
Space needs.
There is a bit of an update with that. I have been in touch with the consulting firm. They are ready to go. I set it up with the county for them to be waiting for their request for data. My guess is they likely have that data for, by now. The next step is for them to come in and interview people. They will be interviewing me and the police chief and a number of officers. They will be looking for other people that we decide for them to interview. So, you all can think about whether or not you wanna talk to them or have them talk to anyone specifically and, and if there are specific things you want for them to look at. But they're starting the process. I believe they're looking to have the data pretty well organized before they do the interviews. They should be setting up the interviews around now. They will be doing it over a shift change with the police department with the same questions so that they can hit as many people at once before they have a chance to talk to each other so that they can have, you know, off-the-cuff, non-filtered responses. So, I think we should have good results, I'm feeling, six weeks. She felt as though we should be done with, we should have results within six weeks that can then go to the committee, the committee to evaluate.
Should they be talking to like, strike and dispatch or department heads? Highway, fire, fire, you know? Should they be talking to them because they interact with police? Or is it strictly about the police department only?
Those, so, public safety officials, the highway department and fire department work with the police department. So, they have a unique firsthand perspective in what it's like to work with them at certain times of the day, at certain times of the week, over certain kinds of calls. So, I think that's appropriate.
Okay, what about the dispatch center?
Well, they'll get the data from dispatch. I'm not sure what the, what else they'll get from dispatch. I mean, they can look at data encompassed to other places if they wanna do that, but I don't think dispatch is going to offer any kind of quality of information.
Okay, what about surrounding towns that respond to emergencies to our town? Rebecca, Southburg, Dover, some of those.
Like, police chiefs for the three?
Oh, I don't know, I'm just wondering, I don't know how deep they go into it, you know?
I feel like at certain point, would they, only so many interviews are included with the whole process?
Yes, yeah, I didn't know if it was just our people or are we gonna broaden it out a little bit?
Depends what we're looking for.
Right, it depends on what you're looking for. So, I think Jessica's quite, quite right that there's a certain level of service and information for the price, but we can certainly talk about the value of seeing what those departments have to say about their experience with our department and, you know, particularly in light of having been short-staffed for, you know, the experience of, you know, and, and seeing how we're better staffed now, like, there's a change in perspective there.
Well, I would, I probably would just go with our local department heads right now and see, and let them ask it, because they know that we have, I don't know if they call it mutual aid for the police department, but they do have.
They do.
You know, they have people who assist us because we sometimes only have one business on duty at a time where they have multiples around us. So, I don't know if that's important part of the conversation or not, but I think at least our two department heads.
I will ask them about what level of, you know, time for what, yeah.
Do they normally interview and does it go outside of our town, you know? And get any answer from them and then we can talk about it a little more. Because I don't know if there's one town, like a city, that covers more than another, I don't know.
Probably Dover. But, you know.
Cause of Route four.
But then you've got Somersworth with, you know, Calmont and up there, so, you know.
And Southburg, Route four as well, it's the other end. You know, so do them, so. Alright, I would suggest that at least the other two department heads, because they work a lot together with them. Is that good for you two?
Yeah, good.
Okay.
Good.
Alright, transfer station pass or duplex?
This is a new one.
Is this the same situation with the department? Or they're down here, because just make a motion.
It is essentially, it is essentially the same.
I, I want to hear a little more detail because what I think you said to me, I'm gonna challenge that. So what, say that, say what it is.
So this is a duplex.
Yeah.
The property owner who is not a resident with like a, not an annual, I mean, that, they, they, they really prefer, you know, a longer-term pass, which was not what the board decided to grant. But this individual comes in, he said periodically, to ask the board for a single-day pass when tenants, when there's a turnover in tenants and he's got leftover furniture and whatnot. He has some clothes and toys, he said specifically, both of which would not be fee items and.
And what street is this?
Silver.
One duplex, only on Silver, both of not empty. One duplex on Silver. That's why I'm trying to. The only other one is, is a homeowner living in the duplex on the corner of Shore. I mean, by Route four, the Chase place. The other one is right across from Silver Lane or close to it.
I think there are two right there, aren't there, next to each other that are both duplexes? I think there might, I can ask him for the address, but we can.
Yeah, because I, I went down the street because I'm like, I can't think of any other duplexes or any apartments and the only two I can, well, the only one I saw was the Chase's, which lived there.
There's also, well, there's also the one on the corner of Cricket Lane and this, and that's not the person who's requesting it and he is a resident, but I already know on.
Right, I knew about that one and he, he's a, he's a resident.
Yeah, that's not it.
So the only one I think it is, is the one that's off, right by Silver, what, where David lives in? And the other side is both.
No, I think it was down further.
So I would like clarification on, on the address because.
Okay.
Silver doesn't have very many duplexes. The only other one I thought might be was Fitz's house, who's down in the park.
The, the market that puts a duplex.
Yeah, it's a two families market.
It could be, it could be that one. I wasn't sure who bought it, I think it's in Silver.
I think so.
Yeah, so that, it could possibly be that one.
Well, I don't think so though because he mentioned that he's been doing this for two or three years, coming in for single use.
Can you just say clothes and toys? There's Johnny and Billy.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
They're not, they're, I just want confirmation on the address.
Okay.
Just because Silver Street is very limited on. Just because Silver Street is very limited on apartments, so.
Okay.
Transfer stations, I don't, I demand. The word got out. Alright. RWSD concerns, according to our commissioners.
You had requested for that.
Yeah. Didn't say anything, am I right? I don't think they're comfortable, to be honest with you.
So.
We had our public hearing and their public hearing is, there's several people that said, have you talked to them directly? So my question is, we should be sending up a meeting with them and have a conversation. But I, you know, I don't know if they're gonna, to be honest. But, I mean, just need to find out the plans and, you know, I mean, the reason I went to the public hearing is because they wouldn't listen to me. So we did. But that was one of the concerns, is to have you talk to them directly.
Does anyone know what came of them? I don't even know if they can discuss it. The, they wouldn't tell anyone what Ray's, you know, like they, you know, don't know anything about that.
It was not public, it was only.
And that they moved, they moved to send a letter and I was wondering if anyone knew what the letter was or what it went to or?
Is there anything this coming Wednesday?
If it's over two weeks, then it's.
Then it would be this Wednesday. Anyway. I'm gonna go to the next meeting so I can kinda hear whatever, but if you wanna wait until the next meeting before we pass to have a meeting, if we pass, I mean, I just think that, I think that.
Commissioners would help. I think, I think it would.
Yeah, do you think that it's something that you would like to participate in?
No. To be quite honest. Would I? Maybe. Do I want to? Definitely not.
I mean, if you don't think it's important, that's okay too. I mean, but we had a public hearing, do you have any concerns and?
It's very uncomfortable.
It is uncomfortable, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, but it.
I, I think we could open up the dialogue. That's all we can do.
Well, cause then if we, if we don't, if we don't ask a conversation.
It's due diligence, really.
Exactly. And then it's like, well, please, why, why'd you do all this and not gonna do anything about it?
Right.
I mean, and if it ends up being, and we both walk away shaking our heads, it is what it is, we made, we made the effort. And I think we have to do that.
Would you want to look at a calendar and come up with a couple of dates and add quotes to them?
Let's, let's put it off until next week, let's look at our calendar. Cause we have a bunch of meetings. Or people on committees that are having a budget, like what, when it's?
Six months of Wednesday, so. What they said at the last meeting was that they were gonna get stuff going March of next year. So if that's their narrative and they stick to it, then there's nothing actually wrong with it. It just isn't as soon as anyone wants it to be.
Yeah, but it also wasn't what was voted on either. You know, to pursue, they're not, they're not doing what they said they would, or what was voted on to do.
They're allowed to and what they've said is vote us out.
Yes, they are. Yeah, that's, you're absolutely right, they are allowed to, to not do, object just like we are, so. But yeah, I mean, we'll talk about it in the next meeting, because of how we feel about it. We'll leave it on there. Alright, I don't think that any of us are, aren't policies. Okay, so, board members' activities and updates. Who's the national first? You don't have any?
I do.
You don't have any?
I can't find the next meeting.
Do you know when the next meeting is? Is it Wednesday? Wednesday, St. Louis?
This one's.
This one's.
It's every two weeks.
Yep, six thirty.
Yes.
Thank you, Nancy.
Thank you. Okay, so, this week coming up, I don't have anything that goes to St. Louis meeting on Wednesday. Probably good. I don't think I have anything else this week, it's just gonna be starting the next week. Yep. Pretty about two. County full of storm. County administrator update.
Planning board meeting went well, we had a lot line adjustment that went through and someone else that was approved to go through ZBA, a single-family house on Howe Street on a non-conforming lot. The Silver Street subdivision was voted approved and they accepted the recommended revisions to their covenant, which I think are significant, that they've agreed that there will be no cutting of trees within a hundred feet of the river. So that would apply to all property owners and that also the property owners are relinquishing their right to process with the ZBA for variances to the river setback. The river setback's two hundred and fifty feet and one of the houses is already fifty feet into the setback, so that house is not gonna be able to have a shed in the backyard or a deck or anything like that. So I think they're kind of creating a hardship for the future owners of that property. But now the covenant, that's restricted so that they will not be able to go to the ZBA for a variance from the setback requirement of the river. That was in keeping to my mind with the will of the ZBA granted the variance that allowed that one lot to encroach fifty feet. They were concerned about protecting the river, so.
No, I, I don't understand, I don't know what covenant is, so, excuse me. So basically, they, at one point, ZBA said, okay, go ahead, you can approach fifty feet and now they're saying, we regret that the zoning ordinance made that, so now we're gonna make an agreement that we can never amend this?
No.
Oh, okay.
So, so the zoning ordinance dictates how people can use their property. If you want relief from that, if you don't think it should apply to you or provides a hardship for you, then you go to the ZBA and ask for a special exception or a variance, depending on what you're trying to do. So the, so the applicant did that and the ZBA has allowed them to build one of the homes within fifty feet. So it's encroaching within, so it's gonna be two hundred feet.
Encroaching fifty feet, closer than it should be.
It's fifty feet closer than it should be, so it's gonna be two hundred feet away from the river instead of two hundred and fifty feet away from the river. People have the right to process. People have the right to deal with their property as they see fit, but only within the regulations. So because the ZBA, so the covenant is a legal document that governs how people use property within the development typically. And so there are, it's a document that says what parts of things the homeowners association will maintain and what parts the property owners will maintain and some things like that. So because the ZBA really struggled with granting the variance and at first they weren't going to, but they granted a revised application. So, so what they wanted before was more of an encroachment and they would grant it. And so they got the fifty feet on one lot. But because the ZBA was really concerned about protecting the river, it seemed in keeping with their will to allow the ordinance, that it would not really be appropriate for future property owners to say, okay, well, I got my house, but I can't have a shed or a deck or, and anything else and that's a hardship. So the covenant sort of acknowledges that the lots were created in such a way that they may wanna go to the ZBA, but, you know.
There's no hardship.
There's no hardship, it was created exactly in that way and, and, and knowingly so, to really speak. So that's why it was put in there.
So when you're saying they cleared zoning and they cleared planning, are they all set to go with us?
They're not all set to go quite yet, they still need approval from the water sewer district and the state for the expansion of water. So they're working that out still.
Cause there's concern from the fire department that that hydrant is, and the water is not acceptable for firefighting. But St. Louis doesn't believe that's true.
So the planning board has put the stipulation on this proposal that the water pressure as a result of these seven homes will be proven to be no worse than it already is. So, you know, it, it's, so while the state only, and maybe the district, I don't know, but the state only cares about you reaching a certain minimum pressure, we're requiring that they meet whatever state standards, but in addition to that, that this project will not result in existing customers experiencing diminished pressure. So they're, they're gonna improve the system or keep it equal, in other words, rather than draining the system as far as pressure's concerned.
So is it possible that without improvements, that it would be the same? So the, the people developing would have to pay for improvements?
Yes, but just like when in a subdivision, people build a road, you know, the road they build at their expense, but then it becomes a town road typically, not always. And then the town has to maintain that going forward. So it may require a booster pump to get pressure to meet the correct standard for that subdivision, which likely would improve other property owners in the area, their pressure as well. But then if, if that is required, then that pump station would be, that booster pump would be an asset of the water sewer district that they would have to go in forward.
Maintain it or buy it? Would it be part of the element?
Maintain it, maintain it. And the body of it is really between like the district and the property owner about what they work out for, who's paying for what exactly.
Is this the person who went to the last water district?
I don't remember who that was, the guy that was sitting in front of.
Yeah.
He's the property owner?
Yes.
And he was asking for, he was told by the state or something that the water sewer district had to sign off on plans that had to, and he had to pay for an engineering study to have it done. And then they were discussing whether they pay for it and he reimburses them or not. But this is, this is outside and separate of that, right? Same guy, but different issue.
Same person, but it, but it's all tied together because the planning, planning would not issue them full approval for their subdivision until they get water and sewer, like water figured out. Because you can't have a subdivision with no services. So, you know, they'll get their required paperwork submitted, the planning board will review it and it'll be part of conditional approval ultimately, like, you know, or some kind of part of the approval process.
And you would require them to do wells versus being hooked up to the city, so.
Because the one house out there, the Victorian, is in the district, receives water. It is an expansion of the district to put more homes on it, but at the same time, those new homes are geographically within the district. So that's a nuance that I'm not gonna, you know, can't comment on legally, but their ordinance does require that people who live within the district hook up to district services.
So people who live in the district can't have a well?
Correct.
Oh, I didn't know that.
Or a septic tank. You're not supposed to. And it may be a provision that like, if you have like a septic before, like sewer was installed in your street, then you can keep it until it, like goes bad. But you're supposed to hook into it rather than install a new septic system.
I think that my water goes, cause I'm on Route four, but I get water, but it's because it comes through my backyard, St. Louis street.
Yeah.
Yeah.
At the end of the line there.
Someone with a select background, none of them have it.
Oh, really?
From the neighbor, yeah.
Oh. So that's going well, he, he, you know, they reached a hurdle and it's not yet approved. The John Flatley Company owns a Terra Meadows next to Market Basket in Summersworth. They received approval through the Summersworth Planning Board to expand that apartment complex and they are currently building new apartment buildings back there. I met with a representative from that company last week. They would very much like to build yet more apartment buildings in Rollinsford at the end of that road behind what they're currently constructing, which is behind Terra Meadows. They need to go to the ZBA for that. They, it's a commercial district, it does not allow for multifamily dwellings. The height, it would exceed the height requirement. They've gotta go through Summersworth to get approval of expansion of sewer and water utilities out there. So they will come to ZBA not until they have what they need from Summersworth. They need Summersworth to approve the expansion of sewer and water. Summersworth, I would expect, would want a transportation study, a traffic study for the intersection of High Street there. I believe it is probably up to the select board when the time comes about whether or not you wanna allow the expansion of utilities into Rollinsford in addition to them going to ZBA. So by no means is it real yet, but they will be coming through process one, at some point, once they go through Summersworth. That is two forty-eight unit buildings. So it's a significant impact, it might also qualify for a regional impact study.
Especially school system.
Yeah. Yeah, so they're gonna provide financials on all that, it'll be interesting, but it's, you know, it's out there a little bit, but I just wanted to get you thinking about that. Two forty-eight unit buildings, four stories. So they need, so not allowed to have multiple dwellings, variance for that, and a variance for building height. Minimally, they may need other building, other variances as well. The firewall's in tomorrow, today, it came in, the firewall that you all ordered, the wifi firewall for the front office, we're gonna have internet down tomorrow afternoon while that's getting switched out, but it should result in better water supply. So we'll see about that.
Installing a firewall?
Well, because the firewall device is also a, it's a, it's a.
Repeater.
Yeah, yeah, so it's a, it's a multi-device thing there. So just wanna let you know that that's going on.
We needed it for the DMV computer.
There are some purchase orders. I have two purchase orders for the board to consider, there's another one in here as well, and a variety of mail. But the first one is P O one seven five one, it's Middleton Lumber, and that is for the reconstruction of the front step out there. Three hundred and ten dollars fifty-one cents.
I move purchase order one seven five one to Town Middleton for a board's supplies for the new front step with an amount of three ten fifty-one.
Middleton Lumber down.
Oh, Middleton Lumber, sorry.
Yeah.
Yeah, I didn't complete that, I just.
You know, it opens the town.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Yeah, I guess why would the town of Middleton if it exists, wanted to repair a lot of stuff?
They just gave us a really good deal.
Thank you. This other purchase order is a discussion item. It's for, to Avatar for approximately a hundred dollars a month. That's based on last year's figures, last year's figures is, are, is really like ninety-six dollars a month. This is online assessing cards. It's prorated for the year, so it would cost three hundred dollars this year. It would be twelve hundred dollars approximately for a full year. It would, it's part of my budget request, it's reflected in the budget, that, the budget proposal and the budget worksheet. I'm asking for it now because with the change of town hall hours to Tuesday, I think it's gonna help a lot the confusion of the people who are primarily not residents and otherwise not going to be aware of the change. So you can think about it and ask questions. It would be a benefit from day one because people are calling for this information, asking for it to be emailed because they're driving in during town office hours to get this information. And so it's disruptive to workflow, but it's also not good customer service. So. So I put it up there.
So what is this do to stop that? What is this going to do to stop that?
It's going to provide a link, we will put a link on our website that says, property tax assessment cards are here. And then you can search in a variety of ways to get the card you're looking for by address or by map and lot, so they can get the information they're looking for. So purchase order 1752 to Avatar.
All right, I'll move purchase order 1752 to Avatar for $297 for online assessing cards.
Any discussion on it?
Who we talked about about last time?
Yeah. All right, all those in favor say aye. Aye.
Thank you, I think that's, you know, I cannot overstate the enormous impact that will have for the office. And that's all I have for my, oh, I have one other thing for my, thank you. As part of the changes in the way we are handling planning and land use consulting in the town, I am requesting that we make a change to the pay for Tom Clark to reflect his time for that purpose, which is in next year's budget. It would have no budgetary impact for this year. It moves money from planning consultants, the planning consulting line to his line. It's an under-expended line for this year, so it's not going to have, it's not an overage. It would be approximately $1,300 for the rest of the year for that transfer of budgetary dollars. And I'm requesting that the board add to his list of titles, land use administrator. So this is a, just something for his file to that effect, if you want.
You had sent this by email?
I did, I sent that in Gmail, so you see it before.
So what do we need for a motion? To change his title?
To change his title and pay rate to reflect the title for the remainder of 2019.
For that time alone? Is his, is his rate the same going for everyone?
It's the same rate, like, he's paid at the salary based on currently six hours a week, so that bumps him up to reflect.
So his rate is the same?
Yeah.
So I think we should really add to Tom Clark's title of land use administrator and authorize the expenditure of the planning.
Seven, all right, further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye.
Thank you. There is other stuff in there, but that's all I have.
Is there any pressing in there?
There is a purchase order for cemetery. I think everything else can wait. Purchase order 1531 to Janetta's Landscaping for two mowings of the new and old town cemeteries for $2,680.
Move purchase order 1531 to Janetta's Landscaping for mowing and trimming for $2,680.
Any discussion?
No.
Sorry.
And I do have one more item, go ahead.
All those in favor say aye. Aye.
This is one more DRA report, this is a certification of the default budget that was proposed for 2019, which should matter because we didn't operate in 2019, any default budget, but it is a required document to certify what we entered as a default budget. So I just need a cert, a signature on the front page.
So move to file the...
The...
MS-DTP for 2019 for the default budget of Rollinsford.
I'll set it for that.
All right, all those in favor say aye. Aye. So we all have to sign it in right of position, sorry?
Yes.
It's missing this one.
DTP.
David Thomas, pop up. So print and then signature, right?
Yep, yep.
Yes.
I remember.
Print, position, signature, yeah.
Oops, sorry. I'm still throwing things now. That's always the funny, it's on her hat.
Time, April, time is everybody.
Is there more correspondences that we need to talk about?
The rest can be tabled.
Okay. Community input? Okay, okay, make a motion that we go into non-public for RSA 91-832 for personnel, and we also need to go into non-public for, now I don't see the welfare.
No, it's not, it's...
I need the numbers.
Yeah, I need to put the number.
Okay, what's, what is it?
11 minutes.